I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Ustrach. All right, and through that we can begin with the board, please.
Sure.
Mr. Sickich.
President.
Mr. Schultz.
President.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Ustrach.
Here.
Mrs. Justin.
Here.
Ms. Klud.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Keller.
Here.
President Emmett.
Here.
Proper notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the open meeting laws of the state of Wisconsin. Now I want to ask if the superintendent, Dr. Lexman, or any of the board members have any additions or modifications to tonight's agenda.
All right, no changes.
Yes? Okay. And now we will begin with public comments. I have three listed here, if there's any more in the back, I'll need to get those collected. Just a quick reminder, if you haven't done public comments before, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. This is a conversation for you to address the board, we will not engage or debate during the public comments, but rather you'll get a response from the school board, either myself or from Dr. Lexman, before the next scheduled board meeting. Please remember to give your name and address when you come up to the podium, please. All right, Candy Travetowsky.
Good evening, my name is Candy Travetowsky, I live at 1524 South 64th Street, West Dallas, Wisconsin, 53214. I'm here today to speak on behalf of Jessica Keys. I have known Jess for two years now, and I can say without a doubt she's one of the most caring, respectable, and hardworking people I have ever met. Jess has given everything to Central, from her job in the office, to helping with events, to making sure there's someone ready to help parents and children navigate the ins and outs of high school life as they complete this last stage of schooling before becoming an adult. Jess takes her job at Central very seriously, and will not do anything to jeopardize the welfare of a student. They harrow her lifeline, and for a great number of students, she is theirs. I've witnessed the interaction between Jess and the kids at Central, and she is probably the most respected person in that building by those people, and the kids, and the staff as well. Kids come to school just to say hello to her. That one interaction is the difference between a good day and a bad day for many of the kids at Central. It's the one key element that tells a kid, "Someone does care about me." This last month has been terrible for many children at Central. I went with Jess for an initial meeting that eventually led to her termination, and I can honestly say I was dumbfounded by what I heard at that meeting. Jess would never, without the direction of an approved person, change the schedule of students. I watched as Human Resources handed her a document about job descriptions, something Jess had never seen before. My problem with that job description handout is that this was a transition year at the high school, and she was doing the job of two people, again, with the direction of an approved person. If Jess shouldn't have been making the changes that they asked her to make, she should never have been trained to do so, and the new head secretary should have been sent for training immediately. Additionally, I have on numerous occasions needed help in the office. She's the only one that even acknowledged my presence. When I had trouble getting answers from my daughter's counselor, she would make sure they responded to me. And she is the reason that my daughter was finally able to get a meeting for a 504 plan after four months of waiting. Her counselor ignored it for the first two months. It should not take that long to send an email to get the ball rolling on something that important. Another issue I have with that whole meeting was questioning her about meeting with students privately. Do we not, as parents and adults in our schools, teach our children in kindergarten that they should go to any adult in the school if they need help, especially if they feel they could not talk to a parent? I cannot fathom what was so wrong about her talking to kids privately and helping them. Are we saying that only counselors can talk to our children, not even teachers? My daughter would talk to her many times, and she always helped her. There's a reason she is called Mama Keys by the kids at Central, she cares. To some kids, she's the only person in their life that does care for them. Jess is the glue that holds Central High School, parents, staff, and kids together. Please don't take her away from us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kayla Travetowsky.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kayla Travetowsky, I live at 1524 South 64th Street in West Dallas, Wisconsin. I'm speaking again on regards to Ms. Keys. Ms. Keys is a key aspect to our school and the wrestling program. She is one of the two people in the office that actually helps students and cares about them. She takes a time out of her day to talk to students if they're having a rough day. No one else in the admin, I believe, does. She's the absolute last person I feel that should be evaluating on the administrative staff in Central. Our district cannot afford to lose good staff and teachers like Ms. Keys. The students like people like that. People like Ms. Keys are the reason why students come to school. She pushes kids to complete their education so they can walk across the stage and receive their diplomas. Ms. Keys is the glue to the office and to students like her, and trust her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kayla Parker.
Hi, I'm Kayla Parker, I live at 2130 South 63rd Street, and I'm also here to speak on behalf of Jess Keys. I've known Jess throughout my high school years, and I can say that I wouldn't have been able to make it through without her. She's helped me through a lot, every time I need something, I can count on her to be there for me. When I wasn't able to get ahold of a counselor or anyone else, she was there. She cared more than a lot of people do, and she supported everybody, and helped us a lot through high school. And some kids don't get that support at home. I think that's very important for them to have, because as I said before, without it, some kids couldn't make it through high school. She has been one of the most supportive, amazing, and important people through this year. I struggled with a lot of mental health issues this year, and she'd been there through it all. Helped me like no other, and I just can't stress that enough, how important that is to have somebody that you can trust, and somebody that you can count on and go to whenever you need them. And so I think that it's important for other students to have that, and to be able to count on somebody that way. And I feel bad that some students will miss out on that and miss out on her. And that's why I believe that Jess Keys should be able to stay at Central, thank you.
Thank you.
Leila Rivera. My name's Leila Rivera, 2111 South 58th Street, and it's in regards to Jess Keys' termination. A little bit over two years ago, oh, excuse me, actually four years ago, when my son started Central and wrestling, I met Jess Keys. She was the main coordinator of the wrestling team. All I saw was teachers, all different types of faculty, coming to her, coaches coming to her. She didn't work at the school, she was a parent volunteer. We had parents, we had kids, they all thought she worked there. They were coming to her for information, saying what a great person she is, how she would be an asset to that school. Two years later, a little bit over, there's a job opening for the secretary. Many adults came to her and said, "You should apply for this job." She didn't need a new job. She thought about it, I get a phone call, referral from the district, saying, "Interview for her." They asked me multiple questions like they normally do on an interview, and one last one was, "Why do you think she would be an asset to the school?" And my answer was, "Because she cares about the students," which was the first interaction that I had with her. She helped out, went above and beyond to anything that was needed. When she, anything that the school, that the teachers asked for, that was done. The morale of the Central before she came was for need help, very help, it needed help. Central was looking for a new morale, to bring up, that's all the principal was talking about, that's all that would be talked in the booster, that's what would be talked about by the teachers, when I would talk to them in parent-teacher conference, which I went to every year. So when she came in, the morale changed, which is what they asked for her. They asked her to help and to bring people together, because that's what they did. She was asked to do things, and that's what she did. And everybody has to keep that in mind, because she was attending to her customers, which was the parents, the students, the faculty, and everyone within that school. And that's all she did. And if you told her anything, which coaches did, would say, "No, you can't do that, we're gonna go here," right away revamped everything, and that was not being a staff member. So please, look into this a little bit further, there's more than what you see, more than what you hear, more than what we're saying. Because we know her as brand-new, not being part of the state or anything like that, and that's something that you should review. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rose Mattis.
Hello. Rose Mattis, 1103 South 57th Street, West Dallas. See, I wrote this at work, so we'll get this. I have five children, all of which have gone through the West Dallas School District, ages 18 to 38-years-old. So I've come in contact with hundreds of teachers, administrators, office personnel, over the past 33 years. I'm sure you'll hear, or have heard, many people state that Jess cares about the kids. Don't take this lightly, while it's true, practically everyone in this profession cares about the kids. But Jess Keys goes above and beyond. She has a personality and a heart that is genuine and giving. She has a knack for seeing qualities in students at an emotional time in their lives. She can build self-esteem and confidence because she is genuine. The students know this, and they trust her. There are many examples of her generosity, but here is one. She has probably made thousands of peanut butter and jelly sandwiches for sports teams and wrestlings, and even has them ready for kids after practice because she doesn't want anyone going hungry. All for hungry athletes after school practices. All the kids know they can go to Jess if they are hungry to get a sandwich or a snack. If a student, parent, or teacher come to Jess with a problem, she does not ignore them, but instead seeks to find a solution for them. If she cannot help, she will find someone who can. I witnessed Jess at a wrestling event, and there was a new wrestler on the team. He was sitting on the end of the bench, looking left out. Jess called over some of our veteran wrestlers and told them to go talk to this young man. She said, "We are a team, but more importantly, we are a family, now go welcome him to our family." I would watch in amazement as just about every student knew Jess and would go and give her a hug, even their little brothers and sisters knew Jess. She brings so much sunshine to everyone's day. We should all replicate some of all of the positive qualities that Jess Keys has brought to work with her every day. This school district would be better, and heck, this world would be better, if there were more people like Jess. Not having Jess in the office at Central is such a loss for this district, but more important, it's a loss for the students. Jess was the first person you'd see when you walked in the office at Central in the morning many times, and the last person you would see when you were cleaning up concessions at night. She was devoted and dedicated. She gave the school a family atmosphere that everyone wanted to be a part of. Please look at the facts and reconsider this unjustified termination, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Ryan Ruiz. Unless it's a T. Looks like an I.
Ryan Rutz, 2112 South 77th Street, West Dallas. I've been a West Dallas resident since 2007, I've been a teacher for 14 years, 10 of those here in West Dallas. Many of you here on the board know who I am, and know that all I do is try to do the best for our students, from having your students in my room, and that I will always fight for what I believe is best for our kids. I'm here tonight because several people in my mathematics department asked me to come forward just to speak regarding the math curriculum adoption. They're afraid of fear of consequences of speaking out, as we already have one person facing a possible disciplinary meeting with our principal. I'd love to be here to discuss Alex, but the fact of the matter is, I don't really know anything about it because I have not been asked to be part of the process, even though I tried to be. Most of you are here because you've been elected due to the prior administration's decision-making process being very closed and very secretive, and I just have some red flags that worry me in terms of how this process went in that regard. Teachers that were asked to pilot this online Alex program were specifically directed not to share that knowledge with their colleagues within the math department at Central. We had three first-year female teachers that were asked to pilot this, and they were specifically told not to mention it to anyone else, including our two department chairs, which is not me. I'm not one of the chairs, I'm just a teacher. At the May Math meeting, we specifically asked what was being recommended going forward, and were told that the team had recommended the textbooks that were recommended by the group, but that Mr. Hengel and Ms. Raymer were absolutely free to propose their choice, and that is true, and that is 100% their job, I get that. I know how that works. However, when less than a week later, the person that tells you that is the one that's here at the school board meeting making the presentation saying this is what they want, that's not what we were told less than a week before. That just concerns me a little bit. Another thing is just the history of when we've gone online. Years back, we introduced a course called A Squared M Squared, which was Advanced Applications in Modern Mathematics, and that was our really first attempt at a math course that was meant to be an online hybrid system. The first year of it went okay. After that first year, whoever at the district level was supporting that program either left or was reassigned. I honestly don't remember, it's been a long time ago. After that, that course completely fell apart. One year later, it hasn't even had an online component, the course is still in our curriculum, and nobody really knows what that class is. That was our first shot at online. Second try, we introduced a computer-based remedial program one year. That lasted one semester before it was thrown to the curb because of the lack of results that came from that. All I'm asking for is look into this, I'm not for or against this adoption. I know a lot of people have worked very, very hard for it, I get that. But I do also ask that if you are putting this through, please consider funding the ancillary materials beyond just getting a few teachers' editions of books for teachers to use as a resource. We need some concrete things to work with in addition to that program. Really quickly regarding Jess Keys, nobody cares more about our kids at Central and would never do anything detrimental to any student here. I am honestly kind of dumbfounded as to what she's been put through personally in the last month. It just seems to me that there are some things that have gone on that just simply factually don't add up. Please keep her, she is amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are the only public comment sheets that I have, I don't know if there's any more in the back. Nope, okay. Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to the... Okay, go ahead.
My name is Nancy Trango, I'm at 2170 South 66, have been a resident of West Dallas for 14 years. So I was a little surprised today when I went to the school, Central, and find out that we don't have a girls' basketball coach, and nobody notified, none of the parents, that the camp that was supposed to start today was canceled. So I'm kinda, you know, a little bit upset, and at the same time, like, why hasn't nobody notified that we don't have a basketball coach for girls and we don't have a volleyball? So that camp, I'm assuming, is supposed to hold, not sure when. I also went to check up on a couple of other things, and three people were there, and no one had any idea. Of course, I know Ms. Keys, and she's been very helpful to our family, to our child, and she's always been there to answer any questions that come up, or that I have, or at least direct me in the direction that I need to go. So today, no answers. We don't have an athletic director, we don't have a basketball coach for girls, and we don't have a coach for volleyball, from what I found out. So I'm not sure when the school, or someone was supposed to notify the parents to let us know that the camps that are supposed to start at Central today were canceled. Because I was there, nobody knew anything. So... And I also asked, and I made a suggestion, well, why are we, since we don't have anyone, why can't our girls go to the Hail camps? Well, because we're separate, they can't go, till we find someone. I just think that that's just, if we want the school to get better, do we want the kids to be motivated? We have to have something, or at least something in place, so that our kids in our district, you know, get better, work a little harder, be motivated, you know? This has been going on for so many years. Like, why do I have to go outside? My daughter swims, I have to pay New Berlin for her to be in a swim team, in a club, because West Dallas doesn't have anything. And when we do have, it falls apart. You know, why do I have to go to Waukesha? Why, why is, we have families that are willing to pay for club fees, why don't we have anything in place for our kids? Hail does, they have everything organized. Why doesn't Central have anything organized for our kids, for our young athletes? My daughter's in middle school, she'll be starting high school. I'm starting to think, should I even send her to Central? I hope on graduating from there next year. So far, I like Central. I want my daughter to go there, but I want her to have some opportunities. And it's not looking like she's going to have any. So do I, I have one more year to figure out, do I stay here? Do I move? Do I go to open enrollment and find another district? I'm just, you know, something's gonna have to happen, because our kids can't keep, you know, falling through the cracks, at least the Central side, because Hail's good. They got that stuff, they're organized. They got whatever, their camps are running. Our camps aren't, and nobody's letting us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wanted to address the board that didn't sign up?
My name is Kayla Rivera, 2111 South 58th Street, West Dallas. Keys, I've known her for four years, my eighth grade year is when I met her. And right off the bat, I knew she was a very big sweetheart. She, even when I didn't even know her that much, she helped me out with so much. I was going into my sophomore year, and there was something wrong with my schedule at Forms and Bees. There's a link that they have us do to fix our schedules to get with our counselors. I did that link right away, and I did it again the next week, so that they know that I did it twice, and they didn't call me down or anything the first week of school. So then I went to Student Services, and I had said, "What other way do I have to do in order to fix my schedule?" Because I did a link two times, they said, "Do the link." I said, "Okay," I did the link again. The third week of school is when I emailed him, because he wasn't getting back to me, and it's already the third week of school. And so then I emailed him, nothing. So by the beginning of October is when he got to me, but the third week, it was on a Monday where I turned in the email, and Wednesday I went to Keys and I said, "He's not getting back to me, what should I do?" So then she had to call him right away, and I got my schedule done real quick. It wasn't until the beginning of October where he had, he called me down to the office, and he was like, "I heard you want to get your schedule fixed." I told him, "It was already fixed, that was the only reason why I sent you the links three times," and I also sent him an email. Keys has been the most biggest sweetheart, most biggest, like, she's the son to Central. If it wasn't for her, not many things would have happened. She's been like a second mother to many, many, many children. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amber Betcher, 2036 South 60th Street. I'm new to the district as of last year, and I would not have gotten through my freshman year without Mama Keys. She showed me the entire district, she showed me how to adapt to a new school again. And as a sophomore, that was huge, having that support already in place. And then, when you would have a problem, and the counselors or the teachers couldn't fix it, and you went to Mama Keys, it was fixed within minutes. There are things that she couldn't do, but did, because, like, not anything bad, but like, she supported us through everything, like, if you had a problem that wasn't even related to school, you could talk to her about it. I don't know, she helped everybody, she made sure that we had somewhere to go, someone to talk to. She made it so that we could actually get through high school, because high school's pretty hard. I don't know what Central would be without her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Miguel Rivera from 2111 South 58th Street, and I wanted to talk about Jessica Keys. Jessica Keys is extremely genuine, she always means, she always has her best foot forward, especially when it comes to kids. If there's anybody that's extremely unselfish, it's her. She's been a great help with our kids. Because you know, I'm pretty sure those of y'all that have teenagers or grown kids already, those high school years are rough, and to have someone that was genuine working at Central, it's very impactful, especially to their lives. It boosts their confidence, there's a lot of times that kids, you know, could be suicidal. Just a simple smile, or someone having a genuine conversation with them for 60 seconds means a lot to them. And I totally understand that, because there's a lot of kids like that. I was one in high school too. And if I would have met Keys, I probably would have made better decisions than like to. So, I think you guys should definitely keep her, if we all care about the kids. Because at the end of the day, we're here, you know, we all have a common goal, and it should be the kids. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll begin the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. So I'll start with 7.1, our school showcase, and this evening, it's Irving Elementary School, it's our last school showcase for the year, so the team from Irving, come on up.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm Chris Gash, I'm the principal at Irving.
I'm Christina Martella, I'm one of the special ed teachers at Irving.
So the goal for, can you hear me okay? Sorry, okay, the goal for tonight's school showcase was to highlight bright spots, challenges, and unique features and experiences from Irving's school throughout this last year. And though we addressed, we address all four pillars from the district's strategic plan, one focus for us this past year was to really improve upon our service to stakeholders and community. And what we really wanted to focus on, again, was increasing our involvement outside of the walls of Irving's school, and also increase the involvement and participation within our school and our school community, involving as many stakeholders as possible. So a couple of noteworthy bright spots are ways in which we were able to do so. In October, staff members voluntarily made donations toward the Susan G. Coleman Foundation. In return, they can wear their pink Irving Care t-shirts and jeans on Wednesdays. And this year, we raised close to $600 to donate to this organization. On the right-hand side, you're going to see our student council, who happened to just be tremendously impactful just be tremendously impactful and successful this year, just instrumental in really, um, building up our school community. Uh, one of the things that they did in December was they sold candy grams and donated almost five hundred dollars to the Wisconsin Humane Society. Um, there's not a picture here, um, from our Veterans Day program, but it was highlighted on the district newsletter and also on our website. Um, so now it's become an annual program for us, and definitely a bright spot where we were able to honor fifty veterans, um, some were friends and families of our students and our staff members, and brought them into the school. So we're excited to, um, continue with some of those traditions that we have established, definitely big bright spots. Uh, in January, we welcomed families to attend our annual math night, may the facts be with you. It was a Star Wars theme, and, uh, we estimated, which is a math skill, we estimated, um, about four hundred students and family members who were actually in attendance that evening. Um, and what we did is we did this in conjunction with a PTA event, um, which was their pasta dinner, and, um, again, many of our evening or after-school events, we tried to partner as often as possible with our parent groups, so that we could, um, include them in on that entire community, again, really stressing that we are a family. Um, and we have lightsaber slime, that was a favorite in the middle there, and we actually had special guests, we had Chewbacca there and Princess Leia, which the kids loved. Again, working with our, um, PTA, we had Super Family Literacy Night, which was all about reading and writing with a superhero theme. And our PTA supported us by financially, um, purchasing books and supplies for that event. Every student, even if they did not attend the night, were able to, um, come in and pick out books to take home. So you can see up in the right-hand corner is a green screen, so we did a little, um, kids got to choose different backgrounds on the green screen. I didn't bring the video with, but you can look on our website, Andy Thompson, our tech integrator, did a fabulous job. All the students had individual pictures taken, and they received those later, but he turned that into a video, that's on our website as well. And again, students, um, it, the night was surrounded in literacy, reading and writing, they created their own comic strips and showed off their superpowers in reading. Now, in April, um, though you're not going to see any pictures of Career Day, I'll talk about that very briefly, in April, we brought in over thirty community members, um, including Mayor Dan Devine, to showcase their profession, and the school or training path that they took to prepare themselves for that profession. So we had that happening in the morning, and why not end the day with a color run? So we worked with the PTA, um, and it was tremendously fun and messy, and I would definitely do it again. We involved, um, quite a few of our families, we had parents and friends that actually, uh, joined in the color run and ran with the students as well. So again, I think we were successful in trying to, um, improve our participation in getting as many community members and stakeholders involved in our school. Challenges, all right, so two years ago, um, we brought the district's early childhood program into Irving School, and, um, that was an endeavor in itself. Um, the only area that we could house the EC program was in our fieldhouse. But our fieldhouse, if anyone has been at Irving, is on the other side of the building, and sometimes seems to be its own little entity. And, um, we have made it work for the past couple of years, but we really pride ourselves in being an inclusive community, and it was very, it was a, a big challenge to make sure that we were making them as much of a part of the rest of the community. So what you're seeing right now is our transition. So we are housing, or we are packing up everything, and we have, um, found a way to make it possible to have our three K, our early childhood programs now upstairs with the rest of the school community. And we're really excited about that, because that did present some challenges physically, and, um, I think this will, again, just bring our community closer together. And for unique features and experiences, um, a couple of things I wanted to highlight would be our Irving Swim. Irving Swim has, um, happened for many years, and, uh, we have our, this year, we actually included our, um, intensive four K, five K program, as well as the self-contained special education classrooms in this program. We have a partnership with Central High School, and, um, our students will work with their students, um, in the swim program and go weekly. Um, it's a highlight for everyone. And oftentimes, I will end up having volunteers, or will have volunteers back at Irving School, who will say they've become teachers or special, special education assistants, or special education teachers, because of that experience that they had with, um, our swim program. So it's really, definitely a unique feature. And the last, um, item that we wanted to talk about is another feature that I wanted to highlight, and that's why Christina is here and wanted to invite her, because this was really, um, her passion, and, um, and definitely, it was something that been, was quite beneficial for all of our students, it's called CBI. So CBI, um, is Community-Based Instruction. CBI is designed for students that need intensive instruction in functional and daily living skills. So many skill areas can be addressed, you can see on the graphic, but educational instruction in naturally occurring community environments provides students with real-life experiences, and that's what we want to do. Um, when that occurs in a natural environment, the student's success rate is much greater. So CBI experiences allow students to do things in real-life settings as opposed to artificial settings, um, that are very abstract. And doing things in a natural environment is concrete reinforcing and a system providing educational relevancy for the students. So these are some pictures of, um, some of our students, you can see that they're going to Oscars, um, and they had been working, Christina, worked with, um, some of our fifth grade classes, where we had buddy classes, and they were partnered up with, um, students. It was equally as beneficial for our regular education students as it was for our special education students. Um, they went on trips to Oscars, um, they made several transition trips to the middle school, um, the farm, the movie theater, the zoo, the mall, Betty Brim, McDonald's, um, and Admiral's name you can see here, Kayla's Playground.
And so basically, what we do, um, previously, we teach the students lessons about it, whether it be a book, or whether it be a craft project, or a literacy or math thing, and they'll go on the trip, and we also reinforce it when they get back. And typically, um, for Oscars, we went multiple times, what fosters their independence within the community.
So, um, after a CBI experience, the teachers collect data, she's got a whole binder of data here, um, and it's, the data is collected regarding safety, communication, decision, decision-making, interpersonal skills, money skills, IEP goals, personal manag, management, and the students will, um, actually have a, they've got their own notebook where they will self-assess, um, according to a couple of different categories as well. So it's, um, it's a pretty defined program. So those are our highlights, do you have any questions for us?
I just want to say, my daughter was able to work with Mr. Fanning this year, Cora was my daughter, who was the intern over there, and she absolutely loved it, and I interned a few years back. Um, with, with Deb Brooks. So I just, I, I know you guys do great things over there, and thank you guys for making her feel so welcome, because she is so excited to go to college now and become a special education teacher, so.
All right, send her our way. Any other questions?
I just, I love Irving, so.
Me, too.
Keep up the great work. It's a very special place in my heart for Irving, so, keep it up.
Thank you. Appreciate that, thank you.
And I, I really appreciate that you've opened the little, little ones. Um, because when I visit it, it does feel like they're kind of off on their own, that they're not really a part of the community, so I think it's great that you're working that out.
Well, and we are collaborative, um, staff as well, and this is going to allow, um, our therapists, our support staff, um, the EC teachers, to be able to really broaden their knowledge and, you know, give some of their knowledge to the intensive four K, five K programs as well. So it's going to, I think, really even boost our collaboration among professionals, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy your summer.
Thank you.
Year one.
Okay, we'll go on to seven point two, there is not a legislative update, things are a little bit quieter right now. Um, and congratulatory resolutions, just a couple of things here. Um, so congratulations for following spring two thousand ten Greater Metro Conference Scholar Athletes from Nathan Hale, Boys Tennis Jacob Paddock, uh, Softball Maria Munt, and Amy Schmidt, Girls Soccer Courtney Curtis, Emma Dos, Dostalek, um, Alex Kapke, Kapkeo, if, if any of you know how to pronounce these, please call me. Julia Smezert, Boys Track and Field Joey DeTaurus, Dylan Case, Lucas Kavneski, Peyton Mako, Jonathan Rowan, Jack Warner, and Girls Track and Field Olivia DuFay, Jada Jax, Jasmine Jax, Nicole Pleist, Maddie Lawson, and Jade Liddell, and then Golf Joey DeTaurus, DeTaurus? I'm not sure about it.
DeTaurus.
DeTaurus, thank you. Um, and Daniel Tabasca. And then also, congratulations to Horseman Elementary Student Bryce Evans, for being awarded the triple A School Safety Patrol of the Year for the State of Wisconsin. And that was a really cool hall school assembly, and the mayor was there, and, um, the chief of police was there, and so I got to speak, um, congratulate Bryce as well. So it was a kind of really cool thing that one of our students was the state patrol, or safety patroler of the year, so congratulations to Bryce. And then, seven point four, just a couple of quick updates, um, for me. So there are no public comments at our last meeting on May twenty-first, so there's nothing to respond to there. Um, you know, we just completed graduation season, uh, and to me, that feels like an extra season of the year, because, um, there was lots of them, and then, you know, in between, I ran down to Bloomington, Indiana, where I had a nephew graduate from high school, and then I ran up to Brown Deer, where a friend had a little five-year-old, um, graduating kindergarten, so I had a couple in between. Um, but, you know, there's always little hiccups with graduation, they're pretty complex things to work out, but overall, I think they went really well. I wanted to thank the board members, um, that came and awarded diplomas, and also many of you, um, just, um, came to be a part of it as well, and I think, uh, it, it is well appreciated by the community when they see all of us kind of in these moments together. I do want to also, um, you know, take a moment here, um, to remind families, especially families that have rising junior school, going into senior year, and it, it almost always happens that right at the end, the twelfth grader does something stupid, and I'm going to say it exactly like that, and we did have three students that couldn't walk, um, because of the choices they made right at the end of the year, and our expectations stayed the same right through the end of the year. And, um, that's, um, unfortunate, and those are incredibly painful meetings for us to have to work through, and it takes a lot of time right at the end, but we have to, um, uphold our expectations. So we had some families that really missed some wonderful, um, events, uh, and, and I want to thank, um, all the musicians that played, and our principals that both, um, you know, gave really great speeches. So it felt really good, even though Saturday's a long day, um, it felt good to send, you know, seven hundred-plus students off into their next steps in life. Uh, a, a couple other quick updates, we, we continue to be on track for the close of this, the, this building, for the sale of this building, uh, which would, uh, happen on now June twenty-seventh. On, and we're also on, you know, a, a thing that we're talking about internally in terms of managing our fund balance, now that we're going to land in a position where we, we'll be back, if projections hold, and I think Mike might get into this a little more detail later in the workshop, but projections hold, um, we'll have a fund balance that's back in the fifteen to sixty million dollar range, which is where we want to be. Um, but I don't think we should stop there. And the, the plan, I think, I'm going to ask the board to really think about, is that we continue to build that fund balance, so we're getting, um, to the twenty million on range in five years. And so that slows it down, the, the rate of increase, but the, the purpose of that is that we're planning carefully for what we're going to do when we need to leave this building, right? So we're going to, our commitment is to lease here for five years. But long-term leasing is not a good financial strategy for a school district, uh, so we need to own where we live, and what makes the most sense, at least at this point, is that we would, uh, put an addition on the ninety-three thirty-three and move the administrative offices back there. It's a facility that, um, can have a second addition put on part of the building, that back part of the building, without, um, any changes to the, to the structure or foundation. Um, so by us kind of planning into that, that essentially saving for that project by continuing to build the fund balance, I think is a plan hopefully the community could appreciate. So I just wanted to give you kind of a heads-up on that kind of thinking. And then, to everybody that, you know, we're, um, today was our last day with staff, um, full staff in all of the buildings, and I just wanted to wish, um, students, staff, parents a safe summer.
Thank you. All right, um, now we'll review the, uh, the board calendar. Um, so tonight, June eleventh, uh, after tonight's regular, uh, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting, we do have a business services workshop with a review of the proposed eighteen nineteen school district budget, an update on the preliminary tax levy, which would be our second, and an update on busing. Um, immediately following that, we would have a closed session meeting. There is no workshop scheduled for next Monday, June eighteen. Um, Monday, June twenty-fifth, we have a regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting, starting at six PM here in this room. Following that, we will have two workshops, one in the Communications Public Relations Committee, and Niola, which is Policy Development and Tools for Updating Policies, and then Recreation and Community Relations for a rec facility update. Nothing on July second, which would be our normal Monday, um, that we don't have a meeting. Monday, July ninth, will be the next regularly scheduled, uh, Board of Education meeting. And then Monday, July sixteenth, at six PM, our Strategic Plan Update, and End-of-the-Year Report with Student Education. And then on Monday, July twenty-third, uh, starting at six PM, a regularly board, a regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. All right. The next, uh, any other board members have any calendar items or any, uh, events?
You only have twelve days left to purchase your chicken dinners for the Monogram Club.
That's right, I need to do that.
And again, if you can't be there in person, you can buy a ticket, thank you to Mr. Bailey for the last meeting, uh, and donate it to a vet, and then we take those across the street to the VA, because we do it at St. Florian's, at their facility.
And if people want to make out a check for that, who do they make that check payable to?
WAWM Monogram Club. That's all I got.
Thank you.
The cost.
Dan?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's a good idea. It costs her twelve dollars.
That helps. Write a blank check, just go ahead.
Better do it with that.
Dan?
Thank you, Stephanie. I just wanted to, um, to compliment, I had the chance to, uh, to sit for the DOTKEY graduation, I also had the chance to sit for Nathan Hale. Uh, not to exclude Central, but I, you know, they're all good schools, but I was extremely impressed at our young people that are graduated from this district. It was just wonderful to see young adults being able to take on the challenge that they did, uh, through DOTKEY, and it was also refreshing to be able to sit up on the stage over at Nathan Hale and see how many young women are graduating with top honors, it was fantastic. So thank you very much for inviting me.
Jeff?
Just to kind of follow up on that, I'd like to give a little shout-out to West Dallas Central. They did something that I thought was pretty cool, they had a, um, gentleman named Tim Fitz, Tim Saint Peter, who graduated in nineteen seventy-one, but never officially received his diploma because he had enlisted into the Marines before that, and they did present him with his diploma there.
Fantastic.
And was very well received by, by students and staff, and it just was pretty cool.
Nice.
Pretty positive. And he was very appreciative.
Oh, yeah. I'll just add to that, that I, I was at all three graduations, and it was just an honor to be able to attend all of them, um, but Mr. Saint Peter was so funny, he's like, had I not gone into the military, I would have lettered in swim, so I'm going to go get my letterman's jacket, so. Maybe they can find you your numerals and get you the bulldog and stuff, too. So, just putting out there, Taylor Knowles, they might have him come and look for some stuff for his jacket, because he's quite excited.
Good suggestion.
Anybody else have any thoughts? All right, thank you. All right, our next agenda is the Consent Agenda, uh, nine, item nine point one, the approval of minutes from the May twenty-first regular board meeting, and the, item nine point two, the employment summary and supplementary contract. Does anyone need either of those separated? If not, we would need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have moved to seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
One, no way. Um, all right, we'll get, move on to item, uh, action number five.
If I could jump in here, just, just to acknowledge it, Patrick, Canous or Nouse?
Canous.
Canous, you do the K. All right, Patrick Canous, Assistant Principal, uh, who just approved in the Consent Agenda, new Assistant Principal at Lane, and since he's in the room, I just, um, opportunity to, um, connect a face and a name, and somebody that's, um, joining the district for the first time, um, for next school year, so welcome. Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, we'll begin with our action items. Uh, action item ten point one, the Shared Journeys Charter School Renewal.
Um, so, this is a, a, a contract that's been updated, you've seen, um, or the board has seen, over time, um, the Shared Journeys contract, so it's a, um, instrumentality charter school, um, and so what that means, um, for board members that maybe aren't familiar with this, in the state of Wisconsin, you can have an instrumentality and a non-instrumentality charter school. Instrument means it is an instrument of the district, which means all of the employees are employees of the district. And if it were a non-instrumentality charter school that the board had authorized, then it's a school that, that is an independent corporation, so usually it's run by a five-oh-one C three, a non-for-profit, um, corporation, and then the employees are not employees of the district, right? So that's the, kind of, the distinction, um, but, but in this case, um, it is an instrumentality, and we're really But in this case, it is an instrumentality and we're really, you know, proud of the work that Shared Journeys is doing and they have an opportunity to move to a better location this year, adding childcare services for their students, which has been one of their challenges. So I think this is an exciting opportunity for us to help this school continue to grow and thrive. So I don't know if you want to go into any details of the contract?
Yeah, the contract is very similar to the one that we've had as an instrumentality charter with Shared Journeys previously. The language has been updated a little bit. Some kind of highlights and features that let it be a little different than if the students were attending one of our comprehensive high schools is that they do have the opportunity to do some blended learning. And then you can adjust the seat time. That's sort of one of the big advantages of being a charter versus just being a program through the district is that we're allowed to actually adjust the amount of seat time students have to be physically present on grounds in classrooms, which is a huge advantage to some of our students who are teenage parents. So it allows them that flexibility that they need. We have a 100% graduation rate from Shared Journeys, as I know, most of you know, which is pretty remarkable in comparison to the data across the state. And this year, we had at least three of the students that I know of right now that have received some pretty significant college scholarships. So we have quite a success rate with what we've been doing. So we didn't make too many adjustments to the contract because we don't think we need them.
Any questions? No, we need a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes. All right, item 10.2, resource adoption, nine grades, nine through 12 mathematics.
So as we move into this one, obviously this one has gotten quite a bit of attention and when you're making a change of this kind of magnitude, it's going to come both with a lot of advocates and then people that aren't necessarily all that fond of it. But there are times I feel in the organization where we've got to push in new directions if we're going to actually get the results that we're committed to achieving. On, you know, and I did share in my evaluation with the board that, you know, one of my own concerns and I even think I said, you know, one of my frustrations and fears, is that we're not developing enough of a sense of urgency to get this work done on behalf of all kids and we're not moving at a pace where we're actually going to achieve the goals that we've set for ourselves. So when a process that's been largely led by some of our best mathematics teachers points us in a direction of a change that has the opportunity to develop more urgency, change practice so that we actually can move faster towards the goals, I get very excited about it, even though there are lots of questions that surround it. There are moments when we have to push through those to get to the place where kids are going to be served well and that's why I see this as a real opportunity for us. So I wanted to do that little preamble before you get into the details. Let's turn that part over to the expert.
Thank you. So Adam put together a presentation for us tonight that has some of the data kind of on where we sit right now with mathematics and to support what Marty was saying, that the change that we are looking to make over time really is far more aligned to the goals that we've outlined in the strategic plan than what we believe our current resources will be able to do for us in moving in that direction. So we started with the strategic plan, which points out kind of where this particular adoption sort of hits in the mix. In the college and career readiness building block, obviously 80% of the students college and career ready. That means that they are scoring in the 61st percentile and so therefore on track to achieve at least a 22 on the ACT, which gets you entrance into most of the state schools, which is why we set that marker that way. But we wanted to increase our enrollment in our advanced placement courses, so we want more of our students to have some of those opportunities going forward. And that we want to increase the amount of creativity that students are accessing during instruction. And that one still says TBD because we haven't yet had a measure for that. So on that note, we're hoping that Panorama next year will have some questions around that, that'll actually allow us to get a baseline for that so that we can access whether or not students feel they're accessing that creativity and those opportunities to explore. Under the strategy side of it, that the, that we would want to teach using high standards for curriculum that provides a consistent foundation, includes differentiated personalized learning and timely feedback for growth. And then under the employee engagement and culture, that we would develop some job embedded professional development that allows teachers to really grow and stretch in new ways, that we would increase collaboration between teachers, schools, and departments. And we've made some progress in that area. I would say we still have lots of room to grow there as well, but we've made some progress in that area. And that we want to explore and support new initiatives with professional development and clear implementation plans. And so hopefully that is what you will see as we propose doing something a little different, that it comes with a high level of support hand in hand. Next up for us in the strategic plan is really to work on these six deeper learning competencies. And this would be what we're proposing to hold in common at all 17 schools. And so we want to be sure that anytime that we're making a large-scale purchase or we're making any kind of changes, that it aligns to those. I know you've seen this before, but probably not looked at it that, you know, at a really in-depth level. So the six competencies that we would really want students to be working on in school are A, content mastery, right? They have to know what they need to know. They have to have basic knowledge. We want them to be able to effectively communicate. We want them to critically think and problem solve. We want them to engage in collaboration. We want them to be self-directed in their learning. And then we also want them to build an academic mindset, which means they have a sense of belonging in every classroom to the point where they want to work hard, where they're engaged and inspired and want to work hard. So we believe that this proposed adoption really does strategically align us far more closely to the deeper learning competencies and helps us just move in that direction with the right support.
All right, so our current data, as Marty was talking about before, and reaching our strategic plan goals, over the last three years, so 14, 15, 16, 17, this is the percent of students in our district that have scored a 22 or higher on ACT in math. So in 14, 15, we were at 23.2%, 15, 16, 17.9%, 16, 17, 22.2%. The average ACT score for, for all students, so when they take, when everyone takes it as a junior, so for the state average, this is our composite in red versus the state average in blue. So as you can see, we're typically about two to three points behind where the state average is over the last three years, specifically in math composite. And also, as Marty suggests, or said and Didra commented on as well, is our maps average for the school district as we're looking to get to 80% of our students reaching the 61st percentile. In last year, we were at 43.8% of our high school students and this year, we are at 44.8% of our students reaching the 61st percentile in maps. So I reached out to Tracy because over at Walker Fisher Tubbs and asked for her to kind of make a statement. As you know, for those of you who have been on the board for a number of years and those of you who are new as well, have probably gotten to notice that at Walker, they have some very successful usage of online platforms. I know we're talking elementary school, but the premise is still pretty much the same is using those online platforms as a tool within balanced instruction. It's not the only thing that kids do all day. They are not just going to sit on a computer for five days a week, 50 minutes, and just plunk away like a robot. It's a piece of the balanced instruction. So Tracy had said that, you know, teachers are able to use these lessons to model, to reteach. And to, the biggest thing for her was the immediate feedback that students receive, whether it's correct, incorrect, or if it's also providing like a video on some instruction of why they might have gotten that problem correct or incorrect. That's on demand versus having a student wait three, four, or five minutes for a teacher to come around to all of the different students and address those specific learning needs. So I have a quick video here that kind of, it's about four minutes long. It kind of provides some pieces in a nutshell. But actually, Alex, if you do some research on it, it actually comes from brain science. So they'll talk about how there's like 1.3 trillion different paths that a student can go through in their mathematics education. And then they're going to talk about their science of how their program addresses that. So I'm hoping that it, we should have sound here.
... an artificially intelligent web-based learning and assessment system. To understand what makes Alex the most effective learning system ever created, let's look at the science behind how it works. Science developed over decades of research at top universities. Let's take a look at Sam, the ninth grader who is struggling with Algebra I. The first thing Alex needs to do is determine Sam's knowledge state. Sam's knowledge state is everything he already knows in Algebra I. To get a basic understanding of what goes into computing the knowledge state, let's pretend that instead of consisting of several hundreds of topics, Algebra I only consisted of five topics. But even with only five topics, there are 32 possible knowledge states or combinations of these topics. Now, some of these states are so impractical that in reality, there are actually only 13 feasible knowledge states that a student could fall into. All the feasible knowledge states are organized into a learning space, a mathematical structure specifying the relationships among the knowledge states and showing which topics the student is ready to work on. To move from one knowledge state to another within the learning space, a student must learn a new topic or forget the previously learned one. So our example involved only five topics, but if we look at the full Algebra I course consisting of hundreds of topics, there are over 1 trillion feasible knowledge states that a student could fall into. Alex can accurately and efficiently assess where each student is among these trillions of knowledge states and know their exact position at all times. This is no simple task and it's a task that hasn't been achieved by any other program. All of this works because mathematical cognitive scientists and software engineers at Alex have spent years gathering data from millions of actual students using the program. This data allows Alex to construct all the feasible knowledge states and how they're structured together into a learning space, leading to personalized pathways to course mastery for every student, no matter where they start. It all begins with a pre-individualized assessment. Using learning space theory, Alex intelligently chooses each question based on the student's responses to all previous questions to determine what the student has mastered, not mastered, and exactly what topics he is ready to learn. The student sees their knowledge state as a multicolored pie chart, which lets them know what topics are available to explore. Everything happens step by step, one topic at a time, as Alex continually updates Sam's knowledge state and ready-to-learn possibilities. Alex constantly watches Sam and records his successes and failures. And this information is used to guide Sam along one of his optimal learning paths through the trillions of knowledge states in the learning space. Only Alex has that power. Because of this constant evaluation, Alex only presents topics that the student is actually ready to learn. Alex challenges the student without frustrating or boring him, resulting in tremendous learning momentum and increasing confidence. Alex will periodically assess Sam to make sure that he is retaining the material he learns. Research shows that periodic assessments not only ensure retention, but actually increase it. A cycle of individualized assessment and adaptive learning continues throughout the course to ensure that Sam has truly mastered and retained the concepts presented. At the conclusion of the Alex course, Sam will have a deeper understanding of the material and dramatically improve mastery over the course topics. Alex has already helped millions of students succeed in math, chemistry, and accounting at thousands of schools, colleges, and universities. For more information or for a free trial, sign up at alex.com or call your Alex room.
So again, just some summary points. So how Alex works is that it uses AI to map out the student's knowledge. That's what they were calling that, knowledge state. It knows whether or not the student has mastered the topic and also addresses that, if the student is ready to learn that at that moment. So it gives you kind of two different pieces. It has the, "I'm ready to learn this because I have all the background knowledge that goes underneath that." Or if I'm not ready to learn this, it is infusing that throughout the entire course that the student is enrolled in. And then it only offers a selection of topics that the student is ready to learn right now. So the big thing was the pie, that's the one thing that you'll see. So from, in a typical course, you'll have anywhere from 400 to 500 topics that are to be addressed kind of through Alex and the teacher over the course of the school year. And the pie is not random, so it kind of starts like at 12 o'clock and then that would be, your yellow would be like your typical chapters one and then two and then three. So it's not like the student is just choosing things all over the place and like, "Oh, I really feel like doing a ton of geometry today, so I'm just going to go on and choose geometry." It does take them through a progression of what a typical book would look like. And then you can see, if you can't read that story, the gray portion represents what the student still has learned, the colored portion is what the student has already known. So in a comparison world, kind of in our, in our current model, under, if we were, you know, assessing pre-test, post-test, assigning assignments based on what knowledge is missing from the pre-test information, I kind of thought back to my teacher days of how long this would typically take me to do. So I would have to create a pre-test, takes about 30 minutes. I'd have to give the pre-test in class, that's about 10 minutes of class time. And then I'm going to grade the pre-test, so if I have 150 students, roughly a minute apiece, I'm at 150 minutes. I would have to then find the assignments in order to address the skill gaps for all of those students and also continue with more information infusing throughout the week. So I figured that was probably about three hours a week. And then I would probably post-assess, which would take about 10 minutes of class time. And then I would have to grade all those post-assessments. Again, five classes, 150 students, probably about 150 minutes. Under Alex, Alex already figures out what they know, what they need to know, and the students take a pre-test in about 10 minutes of class time. And then Alex finds assignments to address the skill gaps instantaneously after they finish that pre-test. And then they give them the post-test kind of when the teacher decides to. We went on a visit to Oak Creek a couple of weeks ago and we saw some different models. Some teachers were like, Monday is the pre-test, Friday is the post-test. Some teachers said, okay, we kind of are a little bit more fluid. And when I feel that most of my kids, because there's a map that you can actually see if your kids are ready for a post-test, they said when they get to about 80% of their kids ready for a post-test, then they would assign the post-test to those students. At West Milwaukee, we've been using Alex, sorry, that's really small, for about two years, they've been purchasing money, or they've been purchasing standalone Alex accounts out of their title budget in order to address some of their needs over the past two years. This was the data from this year. See if I can, I can't make that any bigger, sorry. So where they mostly use it is the RTI 6, RTI 7, and RTI 8, where you can see there's 66 students, 52 students in RTI 7 and 76 in RTI 8. And the students spent an average of, in RTI 6, 53 hours over the course of the entire year. They started at 47% is what they got kind of in their pre-test and those students averaged an end of 89% for that course on their post-test. So it's about 42 percentage points worth of growth. Alex will say that if you have an 85% or better in that course, you have retained enough knowledge and you have gained enough knowledge in order to consider that course passed. In RTI 7, students spent an average of 39 hours. They started at 53% in beginning knowledge and ended at 86 for 33% growth. And in RTI 8, 76 students averaged 29 hours. They started at 54% and ended at 78, excuse me, so 24 percentage points gained. So you can see there's kind of a correlation there between about an hour's worth of Alex, so one class period would equal about one percentage point gained for those three specific classes. Again, even smaller numbers. Over the course of the whole school year, over the course of the whole school year, you can see that there was, like, I know Hale has used this in some situations in their mathematics lab that works in conjunction with some Algebra I courses. You can see there's Alex Pilot in the top one there, Algebra II with trigonometry, 44 students were on for an average, or for 14 hours. They started at 20% and they ended at 32%. They also started that like in March. And you can see there were some Algebra I students, 24 students, 16 hours, they grew roughly 17%. So just some data of how our district has used this over the past year. I talked to Ms. Bodish at several points over the course of the years. I've helped her the past two years in supporting their standalone Alex purchase. And this is a statement that she had said, "It allows students to work at their own pace and their readiness level. We've been able to help students close gaps in their learning using Tier 2 and Tier 3 middle school standalone, which has enabled students to close or approach grade level. It's allowed us to accelerate students who show they are ready for more challenging content above their current grade level. It has also enhanced and emphasized grade level instruction because they either see the content prior to the instruction or spiral back to it when they are ready." And our students are encouraged and motivated through their classroom competitions and recognitions. This was also a big thing that we saw in Oak Creek in all the classrooms. Students were setting goals using Alex. They were charting their progress over the course of the year. Teachers were giving away like pizza parties at the end of the quarter for whatever class had their most growth. And she had said that they believe that standalone Alex is best for all students. They have purchased, within our- They have purchased, within our own math middle school adoption that we had from three years ago, they have embedded Alex, which only goes one grade level below. So if you're enrolled in a seventh grade course, it only goes down to sixth grade. So they purchased standalone, and they purchased about two hundred licenses a year out of their possible three hundred and thirty-plus students. So they have a majority of their students that have been working on this for two years, and they would attribute a lot of their math gains to using this program.
And it was the first year that West was recognized by the RTI system as a school of recognition in math. So there's gonna have to be some parent communication, because this shifts the way that we're proposing to do math. And just as a reminder, although Alex is being recommended as the core resource, that doesn't replace the classroom teacher, right? The colleges and universities are asking us to do intensive problem-solving activities. The things that we're working on in our strategic plan are scale problem-solving activities. They're very interactive, they're lengthy, they take more than, you know, one day's worth of instruction. So it's been challenging for our current math departments to be able to embed those really intense higher-level thinking activities in the time when they're trying to spend this time doing a lot of remedial teaching, quite honestly, because kids are coming in with some skill deficits. And many of the students that are coming from us all the way through, right, don't have some of those skill deficits, but our schools are mobile, and so we inherit students each year who haven't had the advantage of some of the work we've been doing in our own intermediate schools going forward. We have an interesting, a good problem to have this summer is that we have a series of students, a couple from West, a couple from Lane, and then five or six from Frank Lloyd Wright, who actually have made enough advancement that they're about halfway through geometry at the end of eighth grade. So if they would take a booster course in the summer, they're actually gonna walk in the doors at both Hale and Central if students going to both schools, needing to start their freshman year at Algebra Two. That is a very big difference from where we were four years ago, when every course proposal we were bringing forward was for more remedial-type activities. And the schools would attribute quite a bit of it to that balance of time they're spending in the classroom on both those higher-level problem-solving skills, those really intensive project-based things, and having supplements like Alex. We would never propose just purchasing Alex and sending the teachers off on their own to figure out the rest. So the other part of the purchase comes with not only the teacher's additions, but all of the online resources, so worksheets, tasks, activities to do with students, PowerPoints that the teacher could use in the course of instruction to really hit at a skill that maybe students are really struggling with. So it really is a far more comprehensive package than obviously just purchasing one, you know, individual item.
All right.
So the support plan to move forward would be that we're spending summer curriculum writing. So this is planning, aligning the work that we're doing to the standards and to the guaranteed and viable curriculum, embedding those problem-solving tasks so that teachers aren't going to search for those on their own and they can be consistent in between courses. So that's work that will all be done in the summer. Analyzing how many hours a week should students be spending on Alex, problem-solving through, what would you do if a student got stuck on a particular topic or a particular item? As the teacher, how do we look at, in the professional development from McGrath Hill, the functionality is really around the reporting and how do you actually navigate through the program? The coaching, which is an additional nine days, is somebody very similar to what some other districts have had this last year, which is really a coach from somebody who implemented this in a school district to have, you know, work from McGrath Hill, actually coming into the classroom and working directly with teachers. So he not only had a great success rate at implementing this and really saw drastic difference in math scores at a school district where he used to work, but he took his, you know, went to go work from McGrath Hill, from that school district, and now he actually goes into school districts and does coaching in those school districts. So that's what we would use an additional nine days of that to do. Support from Leadership and Learning, so Adam has learned quite a bit around how you run the reports and set up the spreadsheet so that teachers aren't needing to take on some of those extra responsibilities, as well as some additional coaching and support. We're making ourselves significantly more available to this math adoption, to the teachers at the high schools in the fall, both Central Hale and Daki. We don't mention Daki a ton when we talk about this, but they are on board as well, and will be very excited if this is what's supported as part of the plan because the level to which, when you guys watch that graduation, that they need to differentiate within those classes for students that they inherit from all over the math is probably their greatest challenge. And to do that in mathematics at a school where you have two hundred students, fifteen of them might be working at exactly the same level, but yet they have to offer all the different levels of math. They were extremely excited that this might be a direction that we're going because it really does help them continue to do the work they're trying to do and yet become more project-based. So collaboration that we had agreed with the teachers who were part of the planning day and part of the pilot, that they found that time to just sit for a whole day and work with each other on problem-solving through things that are working and things that are not. They said that was one of their most beneficial times that they'd had in a long time. So we committed to that for some extra substitute time so that we could free up some teachers each month to be working together, to be checking in on how this was going throughout the year. And then calibration outside of us. So we already had just one visit to Oak Creek, but Kettle Marine and Racine are also using Alex as a standalone right now. There are four other districts in our area who are in our same vault, likely considering adapting it as their core resource, yet this spring. And so there's a network of those people that McGrath Hill gets together and invites teachers from all those different districts to just sit and say, "Okay, you're two years in, what help do you need? How did, what did you figure out about this? You're one year in, you're eight years in, so let's sit at a table and figure out how do we best support one another, even though we don't all work in the same place." And then the last one, the costs. So the seven-year digital access, so that keeps the subscriptions current for seven years, which takes us to the point when math would be up for a curricular adoption all over again, is two-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars, that is already in the curriculum and instruction budget. We estimated two-hundred-and-fifty, so that's actually lower than what we had originally estimated in our budget. Quite a few of those subscriptions are free, about seventeen thousand, just seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars' worth of subscriptions would be free based on our relationship with McGrath Hill and some careful negotiating by Adam. The professional development will be paid for out of Title II. That is the only thing you are allowed to use Title II monies for. We got our preliminary estimate for what Title II should be for the following school year a few weeks ago, and it is, there's more than enough in it to cover the cost of this particular professional development. Those teacher materials, so all of the online resources, again, worksheets, presentations, teaching samples, teaching lessons, assessments, all of the same things you would get with a textbook if you purchased one, are all included in that as well as the teacher's actual guide. And those are being included in the proposal for free. And then the last one, this was one that quite a few board members had some questions about Chromebook cards. So we went back and did all of our research. And although there are physically enough in the buildings to make it work, we really wanted to make sure that we were supporting this at the right level. So it would be ideal for all the teachers teaching these sections to actually just physically have a Chromebook cart in their room that they didn't have to trade back and forth and go exchange with anyone or share between teachers. So the teachers that are teaching, you know, a good majority of their day right now, and if we need more, we can assess that, we each have a Chromebook cart in their room. So we went with the ones that are physically in the buildings purchased out of the tech plan. In both buildings, there are a series of Chromebooks that we purchased out of the tech plan that actually probably should have been purchased out of Common School Funds because they are stationary in the library, which is the requirement. Common School Funds, they have to be housed in the library and checked out or permanently placed in the library. So we will simply exchange a few of those carts in order to not have to purchase, you know, continue to purchase additional things. Hale has already purchased additional carts out of their budget. They were planning to do that with Alex or without Alex. And at Central, then we would supplement with two carts funded out of Common School Funds that would just exchange for some of the ones that are currently sitting in the library. And then Title IV was new to us this year, we got twenty-two thousand dollars in Title IV this year. We haven't seen our projections yet for next year, you know, Title IV. So Title IV can be used for technology, social studies textbooks.
Social emotional learning.
Social emotional learning, college prep. It's sort of a random list of things that you can use Title IV for. So in February, we received twenty-two thousand dollars out of Title IV, and we just figured out a nice way to spend some of it, which would be on Chromebook cart for Central so that the teachers would each have one in their room. And now out of next year's allocation of, from Title IV, we'll take another one of the carts out of there. So it was important for us to make sure that we didn't make this any more difficult on teachers or the teaching staff than we needed to. So it is our recommendation that we adopt Alex as our core resource, knowing that there are current textbooks that we already own that could be in the hands of kids if we needed them. On top of that, this whole other additional set of online teacher materials that they would have, plus dedicated curriculum writing time to develop those higher-level problem-solving, more intensive activities that far more aligned to what colleges and universities are asking us for, as well as the next steps of our strategic plan. Questions?
You mentioned Central and Hale in regard to the Chromebooks, but you did mention the resources for Jack.
Daki, out of their building budget, already has more Chromebooks than students.
Oh, good to hear.
Good to hear, yeah. So they had been purchasing Chromebooks before we did the tech plan adoption building. Some buildings had chosen to spend part of their building budget adding more Chromebooks because it was important for the level of differentiation that they have to do at Daki. They felt they needed them, so they've had enough for a while.
Good.
If we have students who, for a variety of reasons, are not allowed to use our technology,
Yep.
how are we addressing that? Part one, in part two, I would assume that would then be printing materials. But now that we've limited the number of printers in our high schools to smaller locations, how do we address that for a teacher so that it's not more labor-intensive for them?
Yeah, so you're exactly right, that students who aren't, for whatever reason, allowed to use the technology. A, you can, we can limit, you know, somebody's technology to just being this if there was a reason that we restricted someone's access to a device. If it was a parental choice and they didn't sign that consent to be using our devices at school, then we would be printing materials. The locations of the printers in the buildings are more limited than they were before, but certainly we can send things to the copy center, we can, you know, we have access to make additional copies for anybody who should need them. That part might be slightly more labor-intensive, but frankly, for the number of students that would impact, I think that's one that if it became a problem, you know, we'd work with the teacher to figure that one out. But it's a valid question, just if you have some students.
Yeah.
Does, does the seven-year subscription include ongoing training, continuing education for the students as the program matures?
Yeah, the program itself for the students continually updates because it's based on years and years and years of brain research, right? So they're continuing to do research and development. The support for the teachers would be, as we have new teachers come in each year, we would need to provide professional development and opportunities for new staff to come in. If existing staff, if one year of that coaching wasn't enough, then we would look to access more of that coaching for the following year and assess it at the end of the first year.
And with that ongoing coaching, is that part of the costs of the seven-year subscription, or is that something we would have to purchase?
Yeah, for students, all of that, that's all embedded. For teachers, we have purchased enough, we're proposing enough professional development really for the first year. But Title II funds where we pay for professional development, and my budget always has a section for professional development, could pick up additional professional development opportunities for teachers going forward, depending on what teachers said they needed.
Is there any thought to doing classroom sets of books or doing like a cart of books that the teachers could check out from the library like we would have with a cart of Chromebooks? If there is people that just it doesn't work for?
Yeah, the textbook would have been an online text if we had purchased a textbook.
Okay.
Yeah, it wouldn't have been a, which is why we're holding on to the ones we have now.
Yeah.
Our twenty-year-old books?
It might be a little out of order, but we are.
A lot of order, the material and the methods are still okay.
Are we, as we train the math teachers for this, are we going to train it or do it such that each teacher is trained at the same level of understanding? Or are we going to have certain teachers that maybe are at a more advanced level that can help mentor the other teachers as the program's implemented over the years?
Yeah, we have a few teachers who have already started down the road of some professional development. Right now, we would keep that, I mean, everybody in its first year of implementation, it's better to have a coach from the outside. But we like things to be sustainable over time, so we typically then utilize part of that coaching to build, kind of train the trainers in-house. We added something to each of the buildings this year, which is a TLC, it's a Teacher Learning Coach. And so last year, we just had one for the whole department so that somebody is getting feedback other than the curricular leads. And we recognize the fact that it's really difficult to get feedback from teachers six, twelve on everything that you're trying to do. So one of the additions for next year is that there's a smaller supplemental, but it's going to more people. So that Central has a TLC, Daki would have somebody, Lane, Frank Lloyd Wright, West would have somebody. So we're getting a broader opportunity for feedback from the whole department. So if those people became then the internal coaches, that would be fine. If there's other people who kind of take the ball and run with it and this becomes sort of their passion area, then they may become some internal coaches as well.
Thank you. I've heard a lot of positives, and I've had the opportunity to look at Alex myself. Are there any negatives to this program? And if so, what are they?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So I would not call them negatives, there are certainly challenges, right? This is a different way to get students where we need them to be. But we can see with the data that we have right now, what we're doing now is deadness, right? Very small incremental gains, a one percent gain in math, in maps. And a, we went backwards last year in our ACT on math, and this year we made it, then two years ago, a slight incremental gain. So the, it's, I would say the challenge is figuring out how to do something new, right? And anytime you do something new, that's challenging, right? We figure it out. The goal is to provide enough support for teachers and enough additional resources that we can still make sure that the students are making far more adequate gains than what we've seen in the last few years. Because it's certainly the gains that we're seeing right now, it is not through lack of trying on the part of the teachers. We have some amazingly talented instructors at our intermediate schools in mathematics that are all three of our high schools in mathematics, and yet they're working their tails off, and these are the kinds of results that we're seeing. So we have to provide a different resource to them, a different way to do this if we really do want to see the kind of gains like Marty was talking about with a sense of urgency.
I understand the sense of urgency, which is, which is great, I'm glad to hear that. Obviously, you don't want to go backwards in a district. The only thing I'm concerned about is the fact that I've heard some people talk about some new teachers possibly teaching this program, and I'm wondering in the back of my mind, is it because of the fact that they know Alex already and they've come from a district that they're using Alex in? Which is a plus. But I also look at the fact that if you're gonna start a program like this and implement it, that you have to make sure that all of the teachers, all of the teachers are involved because it would take maybe four or five teachers that are looking at this and saying, "This is just not what I thought it was gonna be." So I just want to make sure that when we're spending money like this, that it's gonna be something that I don't want to see a lot of trial and error. Okay, because there's already five or four districts that are using it, Racine, Kettle Marine, I think, and one of the other ones.
Oak Creek.
Oak Creek, so we can learn from them.
MPS.
MPS, I just talked to our rep on Friday, and MPS just bought another five thousand licenses across their.
So they tried it at some of their charter schools and had very, very good success, but they've expanded it far more apprehensively throughout that district.
Because I know in the past when we talked about this, I had asked Matt when they sat up here in regards to what he felt about it. Not just seeing that by the app, but I just wanted to know from a teacher's perspective, a principal's perspective, what it looks like and how it's worth. Thank you.
So we're committing the seven years with the subscription. So what assurances are we going to have so as, if the program moves forward? And let's say we stumble occasionally, some teachers may have, after they're using the program, have some concerns about it and may look at how changes want to be made. What assurances are we gonna give the teachers that if, that would allow the teachers to come forward and discuss the issues that they're having with the program without any repercussions against those teachers?
The same assurances that we have now. I mean, you know, that we have teachers who express concerns about things all the time. I had two teachers meet with me this week, not about. I had two teachers meet with me this week, not about math, um, about other things, and expressed a concern about, um, some curriculum writing that was being done this summer or a direction that we were taking in English and Language Arts. And we try to do our best we can to be reasonable in those requests. Um, and, you know, you're never ever, like Marty said, gonna make everybody happy with the decision that you make. But regardless of what we adopted as our core resource, we'd be adopting anything we did for seven years because that's when, in our current cycle, it comes up for adoption again. So that would be true whether or not we went with an online textbook or if we went with this as our core with supplements from the other areas. Okay?
The video looked good, um, but it's a sales video.
Yeah.
They look good. Um, if, if they don't, somebody's doing something wrong. Um, a- and, a- as Marty had alluded to, you, you, if you want different results, you need to do something different. I agree with all that. And if this does what the video says, I think it's a great thing. My concern, um, goes back to something I brought up at the last meeting. Um, we had a group of teachers who had been involved in the original curriculum identification. Um, many were not then included as we were moving toward Alex.
Yep.
Um, I, I guess my concern for that is twofold. A, as we're looking to retain teachers in a district, it's very disheartening to be part of a project or a process and then to feel like your feedback meant nothing. That is something that I think we need to keep in mind. Um, I, I think furthermore, since it seems as though some of that information still may not have been shared to the level that maybe it could have been, what assurances, and maybe assurances is the wrong word, but what is the plan going forward in terms of communicating with the teachers? How soon are they gonna be aware of exactly what this program is? I mean, is that going to be just when they get their training? Or is information gonna be communicated prior to that?
Um, yeah, um, so the process, you know, we had, um, several opportunities for people to participate. And the expectation, you know, some of those were during the day and you can only create some people during the day. So I think as I shared before, is the expectation of the department chairs who were there to go back and share the information. And, um, if that didn't happen, I'll take responsibility for that, right? Um, which is also why we'd ask Adam to go over and meet with a whole team of teachers to make sure that they understood, you know, what direction this came from and where things were going and, you know, what's going on. Um, so we do always want to, when we hear that people aren't feeling included or part of a process, to give opportunity to give that feedback. Um, we hope that that's, you know, people feel satisfied with that. Um, so as we go forward, teachers will know as soon as we make a decision tonight what the next steps are in the process. Um, I talked to three math teachers at Central today. Um, happened to be there for some end of year meetings who are very anxious to sign up for curriculum writing. Every single teacher was welcome to sign up for curriculum writing. And we did everything that we could to make it as easy on the teachers as possible. So it's paid time. You are not usually required to come and sit here and do your work with someone like Adam or myself, like, sitting next to you. Like, I'm pretty sure people can work on their computer without me sitting next to them. They're professional educators.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we shifted that to be where they have particular tasks and particular assignments. There'll be lots of open lab learning opportunities throughout the summer. And we're gonna try to make as many of those opportunities available for people to come and see. Um, some of the teachers at West Milwaukee, so we reached out to the teachers at the intermediate level who have been very successfully using this for some time to make sure that they're a part of some of our curriculum writing, not only so that they can work with the high school teachers. So as we go back to the strategic plan, that collaboration between departments, that's so important. We haven't always had great collaboration, frankly, between our intermediate and our high school teachers. Again, departments. You know, we had cat team meetings, we got information, but that's, that's not, that's somebody talking at them, right? That's not necessarily them working together. So they are also invited to do some of our curriculum writing, um, as well as making sure, so that we can make sure the intermediate curriculum gets advanced and that we make sure that we're really building a network of people so everybody feels supported in the process. I don't like it that there, there are certain people who felt like there wasn't an opportunity. Um, we really did attempt to do our due diligence to get everyone involved. And I will tell you that where the recommendations started, which was, uh, problem solving texts that really had nothing to do, was so far different than Alex or the, the resources surrounding Alex, that it, that was why I did not push further for them to consider Alex from the start. Because I thought if they're going down this college level problem solving text, the issue that we had with it when that was coming forward from some of the discussion with the teachers was that it didn't do enough to remediate skills and kind of scaffold and build skills. So that was why they ended up closer to the McGraw-Hill online text. Um, and that was when I started doing some more pushing around then. If we're ready to do something different, then let's do something different and really do something that has this much research behind it. Um, and I have shared that and accepted responsibility for that with, you know, as many teachers as, as have reached out to me or, or were at meetings that I helped.
Thank you.
Tom?
Um, first thing I would love to do is if, if Mr. Retsch was willing to speak, I'd like to know after he heard the presentation here tonight, if he has changed his opinion at all based on what he spoke about earlier in the evening? If.
Well, I thought we could allow the people to talk.
I, 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 I'm interested to know what, what he has to say.
It, it's really, really is out of the ordinary to do something like that. Um, and, and I think, it, it, part of my job is to advise the board inappropriately. Um, because it, it surprises everybody. Um, we're, he's not ready, we're not ready. I mean, it's, it's your meeting, so it's the chair's call, not mine, but I'm just, that's my job to advise.
He's sitting back down, so I can go forward.
What's that?
I said, he's sat back down, so I think we'll, we'll, we'll move forward.
We have additional questions of, of these?
I certainly do. Um, so the one hour in Alex for one percent gained in Alex, how does that translate to map scores?
Um, like, is it gonna equilibrate to one percent?
I know, it doesn't equilibrate.
Right.
But, so, you, you showed us the scores for Alex.
Right.
So what is the scores, how are the map scores done in West Milwaukee, for instance?
Um, so they started three years ago in the low twenties, um, at College and Career Ready. Then they were up into the thirties. And now I think over the past three years, they've had five percent growth, six percent growth, um, off, thinking off the top of my head, over the past two years.
Okay, so they're in the mid, they're in the forties?
The, the high twenties, low thirties.
Right now, they're in the high twenties, low thirties? Okay, so.
When they started in like, I think it was twenty, off the top of my head, three years ago.
Okay, and they've been in Alex for three years?
Two years.
Two years, okay. So, I mean, I think it's important to make that distinction because we're not being judged, our goals are not related around Alex percent gains. Our goals are gained around map score percent gains, is my understanding?
Mm-hmm.
And so I think when we talk about these sorts of things, that should probably be the framework we're looking at. Because, um, when we're trying to see those gains, that is what the state is gonna be looking at and that's what our strategic plan goals are surrounding around. So, um, I would like to see what those, what those actual numbers were for, for West Milwaukee, which I know is what you've shown us. Um, I'm interested to see what, you know, how Lane and FLW are doing. I don't know how much more implementation, are they less implemented with Alex standalone than West Milwaukee is?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, like, no, almost none.
Almost none, okay.
Right, so West Milwaukee, in the first year of the Blinco Math Series, which is tied to the McGraw-Hill Series, um, they made, I would say, very limited progress. And they just said, it isn't, it's the same issue that we hear from the teachers at the high school, that it doesn't differentiate low enough to really bring up a student who is skill deficient. Some of the students can't add and subtract negative numbers in the ninth grade, right? And so if there wasn't, teachers were spending so much time on that skill development, then that's when they weren't getting to some of these higher level, you know, thinking types of activities. Um, so Wes started adopting, started purchasing standalone Alex that second year because they thought this just isn't accelerating, you know, it's making minimal incremental gains and it's not getting at some of the kids that we wanted to. So they started adding supplemental with standalone Alex and then really saw a drastic rapid growth after they started doing that, um, both in remediation and in acceleration. Um, Lane and Wes have not felt the same need to do that, so they purchased it in much smaller quantities. They still use Alex, though. It's just embedded. So the skill gap wasn't as wide at either one of those skills, schools that they felt they needed standalone Alex on top of the embedded Alex they already have.
So they don't use standalone only?
They use embedded.
They use standalone Alex.
Goes one grade level below.
Right.
So, but they have different resources? They have a textbook, they have all the resources associated?
No, they have the online resources through Blinco, just like the other two schools do. They just didn't have the same need. When they looked at their number of students who were in intervention, the gap between their students in intervention and their students in the classroom wasn't quite as wide as it was at West Milwaukee. So West Milwaukee had a need to really get something that would, again, build that sense of urgency and make some growth for them in a far more rapid rate and differentiate instruction far lower than what the other two schools were feeling like they needed. So they purchased standalone Alex in a much smaller quantity.
So what percentage of West Milwaukee uses standalone?
Roughly two thirds. They purchased about two hundred licenses out of their three, they have about three hundred and thirty students.
Okay.
Um, and the other issue they were having at West Milwaukee, which is why they went down the road of standalone Alex, is not just that remediation, but they were struggling to get any students into algebra. So at Lane and at, at Frank Lloyd Wright, we have quite a few students who are taking algebra in the eighth grade. Um, we have a couple of students coming out of Lane in particular that are gonna be ready for geometry in the fall. And like I said, we have this pocket of students, which is, um, amazing and really evidence of some really good work over the last couple of years that may be walking into high schools starting in Algebra II, um, or Algebra II with trig, depending on what their plans are. Um, so that acceleration that we've been able to see a little bit more evident at Frank Lloyd Wright and at Lane was a struggle for West Milwaukee and they wanted to make sure they had ways to accelerate the kids who were ready to accelerate. So that was really, they felt, um, standalone Alex was a better resource for them to do that than continually embedded Alex because their range of skills was too broad.
And the, the class that, West Milwaukee kids, because they're using it as a remediation tool, they are not enrolled in Algebra, Geometry, Algebra II. They are enrolled in an RTI class that is specifically designed to go from like the fifth percentile to the twenty-fifth percentile. So some of those pieces, the kids who are, um, students that are typically gonna be at the sixty-first percentile or go higher than that, they are not using standalone Alex. They are using it in a totally different way than this proposal.
So.
Because there's like, I think in the video, there's like a hundred different math courses that you can assign students to.
So are we comparing apples to apples then? I mean, we're looking at a remediation course, uh, and the students that are in that course versus looking at something which is gonna be a core curriculum.
They take the remediation on top of regular math, which is why they're.
So the percentage gains are in regular math?
The, well, the percent gains are overall gains, right? So we only give, we give the math task regardless of whether you're in the regular class or in the remediation.
What do you mean, the Alex scores that you showed us?
Oh, the, I, we wouldn't, I, we wouldn't know off the top of our heads. Some of them, you can see that were differentiated, where Algebra I has one student who's using that to advance in Alex. And then you had a series of other students using some of the standalone Alex and then some students in RTI. Can you go back to that slide, Adam?
Yeah.
I can't, can you make it any bigger?
I mean, it's important data, but unfortunately, it's, it's really difficult for us to see it.
It's teeny tiny. It'd be great to get a copy of this, uh, presentation after.
Sure.
Gary's got that.
Yeah, so I was gonna do next, just to get up, but.
Yes.
So, do we have anyone in the district currently who's using Alex? How we are proposing to use it in the high school moving forward?
Yep.
And what does that data look like?
Um, so that's on this even smaller screen. Um, so that is the pilot that, um, several teachers participated in. Um, that was primarily at Hale. Um, and so the courses at the top, you can see. Now, this graph only shows the gain in, within Alex.
Right.
Because some of those students aren't taking, um, maps us because we only give it to ninth and tenth graders. Um, and then we haven't yet gotten ACT results, so I, we have a hard time knowing whether or not the two months that we did standalone Alex in the courses and the way that we propose to do them now, um, what results that's gonna have on some of the overall bigger outcomes.
So again, I would, I would really like to see, I mean, this is two months. So it's really hard to say what, what sort of gains you're gonna get in that amount of time and any sort of standardized testing.
There was no support plan, this was a trial.
Right.
So they haven't been through any formal training. There was no PD plan wrapped around them, ten days of support, there was none of that. Even at West Milwaukee, because they're purchasing, uh, that out of their building budget, um, they have never, they've attended, we had one webinar last year on functionality of Alex and a couple of people attended a few of the McGraw-Hill events where they host for, these are our Alex users and you can come and learn from them.
Yeah, but the data from other districts that have been doing this for a long time is rec-sol. It, it's that this is working. Um, their math, math scores on ACT went up, their math scores went up. Um, we don't have all of their data here to show tonight, but I can tell you that the other districts are reasoning that it's growing quite quickly with other districts going towards it. Is that the data is pretty strong, um, that for, given the broad variety of skill sets that are coming into high schools, that you want a tool that differentiates that level of instruction, um, without the teacher having to do that hand by hand, which is why many districts are going down this road.
So for the intermediate, is that gonna change then? Is, is everyone from all three, all the math teachers, all the math teachers that would possibly be teaching geometry or algebra in intermediate schools gonna be involved in the curriculum writing and whatnot?
Yep.
Okay. Um, so how many hours per week is gonna be proposed to be used for Alex? So how many hours will the students have hands-on Alex instruction, um, in the proposed courses?
Um, so we'll start with the recommendations from, obviously, the company that's done hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours of research on how it's best implemented. And then that's what the curriculum writing team is gonna come back and do and why we're having those regular check-ins. Is this too much time on? Is this not enough time on? What is the data telling us? Much like we would do, again, we wouldn't have the capacity to even assess that quickly if we were looking at a traditional textbook, for example, because we wouldn't have any results directly tied to individual students and how they're growing. So we'd start with the recommendations. That is not what they did in the pilot. That's what was shared when, um, Donna talked about that here. That is not, they didn't follow that full recommendation of Alex. But we would start with that and then make some adjustments based on these conversations that we are having with other teachers who have been doing this for years and kind of those lessons learned from them.
What, what is the recommendation?
Three hours a week.
So you're saying you're gonna start there, but based on your curriculum writing, it might change?
Um, I, I would say that, I think we'd start with the recommendation of the company and then it's gonna have to live and grow with the teachers and kind of work through that.
So after the school year start, you mean, like with, during the school year?
Adjust as we need to, just like we would with anything else.
Three hours a week and it's usually a fifty minute class? So you're, so three of five days roughly would be spent on, on only Alex?
Um, not only Alex, within there, you know, that's the core thing that students are doing. But the point of all of the assessing and that immediate feedback that it gives is the teacher is also employing some small groups or students who sometimes it's not, for whatever reason, it's not clicking when they do something online. You know, the teacher is not just standing there monitoring a study hall where kids are on computers those three days a week. They're obviously working with small groups of students. They are accelerating with students, they're conferring with students one-on-one, checking in on kind of the goals, checking over their pie graph with them, figuring out what those things are.
Yeah, when we went on our visit in Oak Creek, um, a lot of the teachers said, well, you know, they, they split their class in half. So this half might be doing twenty-five minutes of Alex for, I think it was a Friday that we were there. So they're gonna do twenty-five minutes. And then they were gonna do, do direct instruction to the other half and then they were flipping at halftime.
Mm-hmm.
So you're not, you know, it's not like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday for all fifty minutes of your class, you're just gonna sit on Alex and then like Deidre said, I'm gonna walk around and then just make sure that you're working on something. Um, it's more of using the data, because within Alex, it will tell the teacher when students are ready for certain lessons and groups of lessons. So then those teachers were pulling small groups and they were instructing those test, six, anywhere from six to fifteen students at a time. And so it was more of like an ebb and flow rather than a grab a Chromebook, sit down, see you in fifty minutes.
Um, and for some of the teachers that have already started to dig into it and explore, not even ones that were part of the pilot, several of whom didn't, weren't able to come to the meetings that we had or be part of it, as they're now figuring out, they're looking at what would the balance out there, they look like. So sometimes it's just the job of a professional educator. Um, you know, go back to the example of our school that's been significantly exceeds numerous years in a row, Walker. You know, Tracy doesn't tell the teacher exactly which days and which times they need to be on the chief or which days and which times they do Lexia. It's really the teacher's discretion to figure out, you know, how much of what and when you need it and make sure that they have enough resources to do what they need to do during that time.
So of the districts that have had such gains, how many, what, how many hours do they average using it?
Um, average use is the three hours right now. In the first year of implementation, most people go with the, with the recommendation of three hours. Um, at the end of the day, right, we're adopting a core resource and then trusting a professional educator to, to use it under its recommendation as frequently or as less frequently as they need to. Last year, we adapted a social studies text. We have, um, an online textbook with online resources. We have one teacher who really just uses the online resources and her data indicates that what she is doing, we should stay out of her way and just let her do her job. Um, so she doesn't necessarily utilize the core resource that we adapted all of the time. We have brand new teachers who opened up and they taught chapter one on the first day and then they were on chapter two by the end of the, you know. and they taught chapter one on the first day, and then they were on chapter two by the end of the, you know, third week. And that's, they used it as a far more strict guide for themselves than other teachers bank. So we wanna stick with the recommendations. But much like we've used Achieve, which operates in a very similar fashion to this for many, many years. And we started with a, you have to do so many assignments every week, and that was a burden on teachers that really disrespected them because it told them, you know, these were the guidelines from the program, if you wanna see these gains. This is exactly what you'd have to do. So we made it a requirement for classes and so many articles a week that you have to do in the course of your instruction. And we certainly didn't see the kind of gains that we should have because it was really forced upon people right out of the gate. And we came to a nice balance with it, where in some buildings, we use it more hours than they recommend, and in some buildings, we don't use it, you know, we touch on it, but we don't use it for all the hours they would recommend. And as long as they're getting the kind of results that net us to the goals of the strategic plan, some of those are the decisions of the building or the professional educator in that classroom.
Okay. Were there other Alex-type programs that were looked at other than Alex?
Um, Alex is the most comprehensive with the most research behind it. So we did not necessarily look at any other online platforms. We've had a few in the past. Ten Mark's was one that was supposed to do the same thing. It did not have the same level of research behind it at the time that we purchased it as a supplemental material. And so it was not as successful at doing some of the things that we thought it would do. So that's the only one, other one out there that I know of right now that does anything similar, but the research behind it isn't nearly as lengthy and as expansive as Alex, and there aren't other districts in our area using that. So we'd miss out on that resource opportunities and that network for those people.
Okay. Do you know of any other districts anywhere that have tried to implement standalone Alex and failed?
I do not.
Have you looked for them?
I don't know how I would do that.
Have you asked McGraw-Hill?
Certainly, but they have not shared, well, I should say, we've asked them. They haven't indicated that there's anybody, you know, so. But I don't know that our sales company would tell us about, they don't, they don't.
Well, they probably won't, but obviously it's an important thing to know if they're out there because if, if they did fail.
I would tell you that when I go to quite a few, you know, McGraw-Hill networking meetings or CNI networking meetings, we talk a lot about things that work and things that don't. And I will tell you, in my time in talking to people from across the country, I have had people say, oh, we had this McGraw-Hill product and it didn't work, not Alex, but other, you know, because that's what you do with these things. You talk about what products do you use? What do you use for this? And people were really honest about products that they own or don't own that work and don't work. And I would say I have never had anybody tell me that Alex did not work for them. But again, that's not exactly a research study. That's just me asking people.
Right. I mean, I bring it up because obviously if we, if we could find somebody if it didn't fail, I mean, I just, it's really hard for me to believe that it just always works all the time, because if that was the case, this wouldn't be a question.
If it was the magic bullet, everybody would certainly.
So, you know, finding places where it didn't work, um, well, if it didn't work in that school, the question you could ask is why? Why, in your opinion, why didn't it work? What wasn't working for you?
I will tell you that in my years in my field and in all the networking meetings I go to, typically when things don't work, it's because either there wasn't enough research behind the product in the beginning, right? Ninety percent of it typically comes down to the professional development that was or wasn't provided with a plan for sustainability. In our, our field and in Adam and I go to, again, a lot of networking meetings, because you don't, you'd never make a decision just in isolation, right? You ask other people, how is this working for you? Did you ever try this? What's good, what's not good, those sorts of things. And I will tell you that typically in our own district, when something wasn't sustainable, or we tried something and it was very flash in the pan, it's because there was not a plan for sustainable professional development, right? That's typically when things fall apart. And that's why it's so important, why we felt it was important to highlight that in the strategic plan. We were able to provide more professional development this year to a variety of teachers and a variety of things than we have been able to in the past. We had more accessibility for some substitutes. We had some Title II funds that we could use for those things. So we were able to support a lot of teachers frequently who would just send me an email and say, hey, I'm struggling with this. I need some support. And if we could find them a conference to go to, or we could find them a professional learning opportunity or connect them with somebody else in district, so it didn't cost us anything, we were able to do a lot of that this year. So, but nine times out of ten, if something doesn't work, it's because we didn't support the teachers well enough and give enough coaching and guidance. That's where the additional purchase of the nine coaching days and the factor in the need for more. Again, we, we have not yet set the budget for Title II for next year, but it certainly could be dedicated far more to math next year than to other areas if we needed to purchase even more coaching.
Okay. Is there going to be some sort of like implementation person that's assigned to each of the buildings that are gonna be putting this in to help try to, you know, gather this? I mean, obviously it's not for you guys, but is there people that are gonna be implemented, help to implement this and keep it going and help with the data polls and things like that?
Yep. So at, at Hale, the curricular lead happens to work at Hale, so Donna sort of takes the, and she's the department chair, so she sort of takes the lead with it there. At Central, we're really working on figuring out what's the best way to navigate some of the internal coaching in that building. And I met with Jeff Taylor about that today, and we have a plan at the present moment, but as we haven't really discussed it with that team, I'm not as comfortable sharing, you know, kind of what we threw around today as ideas, because it's really important that it come from that team and get some input from that team. I'm certainly not deciding that and what supports they feel like they need or don't need.
So there is gonna be a person in each building, and is that including the intermediates as well?
Well, the intermediates, it's primarily the academic deans. So Kent at Central, who's the academic dean at Central, would not also be taking this on as he has kind of a core project with Abbott that he works on with a chunk of his time. Mary at Hale does quite a bit of this right now and guided the pilot quite a bit and has those coaching abilities. She's the academic dean at Hale, as well as the curricular lead and the department chair being at Hale. They've been doing some of this a little longer. So yes, there will be somebody within that department, but exactly who that's gonna be, again, I need to work with that team to figure out who that is.
Okay. And is that, if that's added to somebody's plate, is that like a supplemental contract, or is that just in addition to their duties already as assigned?
It would either be somebody that would be able to not have a duty, so therefore they, they have time during the day to do some of those things. If somebody was willing to take on a pretty high level of responsibility, it could be a supplemental contractor. Or it could be an administrator. It could be, there, there are other people in the building that, there's, there's a wide variety of options for people to take on some of the core leadership of that. And a Daki, it would be Alex, who's the, I'm not exact, well, he's the tech integrator and the math teacher and the PIS coach and the project-based learning coach and the, um, a missing one. But Alex is sort of the jack of all trades, right, Daki? So is Alex there?
Okay. There was mention in a board update about survey was sent out to teachers who went to Oak Creek and that those results would be presented, but I didn't see them. Do we have the survey results from?
I shared kind of a overview of the survey results in the executive summary, but Adam can share.
Sure. The, I mean, the survey results, like we heard from teachers last week, or two weeks ago, when we brought this in a workshop, was that overwhelmingly, they believe it's what's right for kids. But again, as many of your questions have alluded to, they are worried about what the implementation looks like because of previous things that have happened. Like Deidre had said, when we adopted Achieve seven, eight years ago, it was due forty articles, and that was the directive that was given. There was not an implementation plan like we've laid out. There wasn't a coaching plan. There wasn't, a lot of those pieces were missing. So we've learned from those mistakes, even as I was, I was teaching at Hale at the time, and you were at West Milwaukee at the time, but we were on the other side of the table in those conversations. And so that's where I think a lot of those, the survey results landed. We kind of did like one aha, one, one question. A lot of the questions were around just what kind of supports are there going to be, which is why we laid out the support plan for, that we, you saw earlier, was having an outside coach, having internal coaches. There's some question, there's been a lot of talk about the data spreadsheet. Oak Creek has a very robust spreadsheet that they use for keeping track of their data. When I met with their, with their coach that works on their implementation, she said, it's really not as much as you think. It's just a well-designed spreadsheet where you enter, I mean, I have the same spreadsheets that I do for maps. I enter one thing on one sheet and it changes in twelve different sheets, so I don't have to go through every single one and update it. As Deidre had said, you know, that might be someone's duty, rather than having a, a study hall duty or a hall duty, that might be someone's assignment. But again, as I stressed with teachers as we went there, the, the adoption that they have at Oak Creek and knowing that they are like a year four, that isn't what we are gonna look like in our first year, and we have to define what that's gonna look like for our district.
And is Oak Creek, that they have standalone and nothing else, or do they also have a textbook?
They have standalone and nothing else. They do not, I don't even, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I don't know if they have the online resources for teachers, but no one made any mention of, of that.
Okay. And how many teachers were surveyed for the Oak Creek one?
The eight that went to the Oak Creek visit. Four, I think it was four, I think, I don't know if it was four and four from Hale and Central, if it was five from Ha, Central, three from Hale.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Gary, I just have a couple more. I know, I, I tried to wait, let everyone else go first before I started. So there was a question, I think, there was a mention about being able to limit the Chromebooks to only using Alex. And there was gonna be some looking into if that was possible or not. Did we get an answer?
Bruce is still working on it.
So, so we don't know?
I do not know right now.
So is that, is that like an additional concern? When we had, we had worked so hard to limit technology, make sure we're only getting the kids allowed the apps and things like that that they needed to do, and now we're gonna open back up again?
It was, it's not an issue at West Milwaukee at the present time.
Okay.
When the students are on Alex, they're, they're on Alex.
And one of the features too that is in Alex is you can actually track what, like minute by minute, second by second, what that student is doing in their dashboard. You can say, hey, I noticed that you spent seventeen minutes on this one question and you never answered it. So that is a point where a teacher can have a conversation with a student and say, did you, were you struggling with the question? Do you need some, you know, is there an additional help that you need?
And some of, no, where historically there had been an issue with the technology was the lack of filter that we had on the technology. So students could log into their Netflix account and watch a number of movies throughout the course of the day or, you know, so those sites that really aren't for teaching and learning have been now blocked by the new filter that I wanna say we put in place four years ago. It was when Dr. Strobel was there. So we had an open, really you could go on whatever you wanted. And the philosophy was that it was just our job to teach students to only go on the, be responsible and only go on the sites that they were supposed to go on. But that's where we got quite a bit of that feedback done. And philosophically, now I believe very firmly that you should teach children to be on the appropriate things, but again, I think there needs to be some limit to that for children. So that's why we have the continued filter and we add things to the filter on a pretty regular basis. If a teacher says, hey, I have students, you know, able to access X, Y, Z, then we add that to the filter and it blocks those things.
An employer's block websites, so it's not a bad thing.
Yeah, I mean, employers do as well. But no, that's where more of the concern came from. It was the floodgates being open to really students being able to go on whatever sites they felt like during the day. They were on Facebook and Instagram and Snapchat and Netflix and Amazon. And the only time we would limit it previously is during the March Madness tournament because we had so many people watching basketball all day long without the wifi. So that was the only time that we got.
Just a bandwidth issue.
So, so for the, you mentioned they could look at the dashboard. Is that something they could do from their desk? Do they have to walk around to each student?
No, they can look at it from their desk.
Check on each student from their desk logged into the Alex program.
Yeah, know exactly what they're doing at any given moment. Sort of like Vision. So we used to have computers where you had a program from your computer and you could actually see everybody's screen.
Yeah.
The only place we have that now is at our expulsion school. So at any time, you can pull up the screen and see everything that students are doing. So it works similar to that, where you can see what students were working on at any given time.
Okay. Yeah, last question I have, and this is really just for my own, just for me, if, if we don't approve this tonight, for whatever reason, what happens?
Well, then we hold on to the textbook and the resource that we have right now, and we regather the committee and we start all over again, is what we would do.
So the textbook till next year, the next seven years?
Um, so, well, no, I mean, it wouldn't be appropriate to keep it off the loop for the next seven years, so we'd have to talk about that because in the cycle, we have, next year is the six-twelve ELA, so financially, we try to not keep too many of them in the same year, especially the big ones. We try to separate those out, you know, so that if one year, next year, that's gonna be a heftier price tag for six-twelve ELA. So therefore, we try to blend them in. Last year, social studies went because it's typically less expensive. There's free courses and this year it would be down. So we would just be looking at a financial increment and the amount of time going into us trying to do two at once, which, but we'd start the process over and go through and vet, you know, the ideas all over again.
Okay. I, I think the last thing I just wanna say is I, you know, I've heard also issues, the same thing that Brian has, has echoed about communication regarding this among the teachers.
Yep.
And I think that there is certainly some angst regarding this because of he said, she said things. And I don't believe anything was done purposefully.
Yep.
But in some instances, I think there is that impression, and it does smack of what occurred in the previous administration. And I think it's something that people who were here during that time worry about.
Yeah.
And so I just would encourage anytime for any of these adoptions, that we try to be as transparent as possible and ensure that all stakeholders in that process are being communicated with, so that we don't have these sort of miscommunications. I think that if maybe a little bit better job was done early on, that a lot of this angst could have been avoided.
Yeah, and I, I don't disagree with that, and we've actually apologized numerous times to some of the teachers for the miscommunication. The curricular leads, as much as we talk about them on a very regular basis, and no offense to Donna and Matt, we're here. But the curricular leads, as much as we talk about what a positive role that is, right, typically those are frequently teachers. And whereas Adam and I may have communicated something differently than a way a teacher may communicate that to other teachers, this one was certainly a, a lesson learned that, you know, we probably needed to be, we wanted them to become organically just from teachers and from those teacher groups, but this one probably needed a little bit more guidance earlier on. And that's something that we've, you know, Adam's gone and apologized to a group of teachers who felt that they were left out. Everyone was welcome to that meeting, whether everybody chose to attend that particular meeting or not. I'm not sure what the attendance was. Adam did that one and I didn't. I have personally apologized to a couple of teachers who felt that they were lost out of the communication loop, because that certainly isn't what we're trying to do. And some of those same teachers have said back to me, oh, it wasn't you. It was, you know, other people within the department that made that communication difficult. But ultimately, I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, right? That's my job to oversee all those departments. But it's the first time where those curricular lead positions being kind of out and about and a little disconnected from us. It really had us knowing that we needed to guide curriculum writing this summer in a little bit different though. So certainly adjustments have already been made for the fact that there certainly was some miscommunication.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I wanna, I wanna shift the communication discussion to students and families.
Yep.
Have you reached out to the other school districts to find out what worked and what didn't work as far as that role?
So Adam will share the presentation. One of the things embedded in here is a sample letter that you would start to send out to families. Our McGraw-Hill rep has already started to work on a bunch of parent communication. When do you start doing the parent communication? How do you communicate to parents? I mean, this is a phenomenal resource to our families as well, who we get, you guys hear them as well, that frequent complaint about, we never get homework. We never get homework, right? We don't, we don't get homework, we don't get homework. And now you have some if you want it, because this is, you could work on this for, you know, as many hours as you want it to. So there's an opportunity for families to engage with this and understand a little bit more about what's going on in their student in math, in a way that they can look at some of the reporting. There's all, all kinds of opportunities for families to engage with it, and we wanna make sure we're really clear in what those are. We, that's the score that typically comes back lowest for us on the parent engagement survey is I understand enough about my child's learning and their learning progressions. And so this really provides some guidance and a communication tool that's unlike other things we've been able to do in the past. Danny?
Thank you. Just a question, because I played around with Alex for a little bit, and I purposely went through and did some wrong answers, and it kicked me back out. And it took a long time for me to get back into those answers, and then it docked me points.
Right.
So I'm, I'm looking at the gap that it caused and how that's gonna affect the student.
Yeah, so. What do you mean it kicked, like kicked you out of the whole program?
No, no, it, it took my answers and said wrong.
Sure.
And then it deducted points.
Yeah. So are you, so it'll take pieces away from your pie if it feels like that is not secure knowledge? Because it's not a secure piece for you because you've answered those questions incorrectly. It's designed actually to do that.
Right, but it takes some amount of time to get back into that situation.
As it should, because what we don't want, right, to a certain extent, right, what you don't want is What you don't want is I know it on this day and I can't access the learning la- later on, right? So it's going to force you to repeat a number of activities before you earn back that section of the pie. Because that section of the pie is saying, Dan knows this now and he knows it confidently enough that we think if we gave him that same question six months from now, he'd still be able to answer it.
So what if a student accidentally puts an answer in that they didn't need to put in? It still takes a piece of that and deducts that?
Well, if it's just one question, it won't.
It shouldn't. And it might do that in the stable just to show you what that's like. But it is a series of, of a lot of, it doesn't just take away a pie on one question and then make you answer sixty to get it back.
Okay. And then the other thing, the board was anxious to, or not anxious, but, uh, they were curious as to any other programs out there. There's one called IXL and there's another one called Khan.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and there are, yeah, we have some schools that are using those now. Um, we have it seen in smaller capacities. Um, yeah, they're not quite as comprehensive and the reporting features aren't nearly as robust. So I apologize that I didn't mention them. But thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
Just one quick question. Um, this is Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry.
Yeah.
So how is this translating into when we get into our higher level math, like our function, stats, statistics? Algebra II with trig, pre-calc? Because this is standalone, this is a specific way of learning. And now if those upper level maths are completely different, are we going to find a failure in the transition to those? Or are we going to be able to move this up with the higher levels?
I think this supports higher level learning. We've tried to really say that this is really building the foundation to get to those F S T classes, functions, you know, statistics, um, and higher than our Algebra II with trig. So those are under adoption in a different cycle than these courses. That's why they're not included in here. We went by whatever the adoption cycle is set, um, like the A P's and things like that.
So the teachers who teach both so far have not had any concerns. Um, but those courses will come up for adoption as well and it might shift to something different for those when that time comes and when that, when, you know, those courses are up, we'll know that.
Does Alex offer a support to those upper classes now that we're going to this that we can? Okay.
Yeah, they offer college level classes. They have, I think there's a hundred different math courses that you can find on their website.
Andy, Noah?
I, I just had one I remembered. Um, kids without internet, you mentioned about being able to use, go on Alex all day long and night if you wanted to. But if you don't have internet, you can't.
Yep.
So I know we talked about in their workshop about printing off resources for those students. I mean, in, in those instances, those, the type of students might need it the most.
Yep.
To be able to access it outside of school.
Right. Um, we also have had a couple of schools investigate. There's some really inexpensive, um, internet options for families, um, that are out there. There's some free resources for internet access at home. Um, as again, that's kind of how the whole world is going. So you're really cutting off a large population if you have families that don't have access at home. So we've had a couple of building principals work with Jeff Thompson as an example of one who's brought a couple of resources for us to say, hey, is it okay to pursue this with families and see if it works for them? Um, and of course, we've supported that and we'll look for more of those opportunities. Um, both, uh, all three high schools have hours where kids can stay after school. Um, I'll give you an example of at Walker. It's what a chunk of the students do for the first half an hour of Action Three Thirty is they actually ask if they can use, get access to computers to do their required, you know, let's their homework is achieved and let's see how things like that. So they utilize opportunities to be on school wifi to do some of those things. Um, and then our public library system in West Alice, if you ever go there on any day, you'll find quite a few of our students there on devices and on access to computers and things like that. Um, so it's our hope to work with families if they really do want the assistance to try to find them the resources they need to have that um, wherever we can and where that's not feasible to provide access to our buildings or some of our resources for the students to.
Is there a way of us determining who does and does not have internet access at home?
Um, you know, you can only, it's, that's kind of an invasive question because sometimes that gets at somebody's maybe financial.
Right.
Situation at home. So we don't tend to flat out ask. Students are pretty frequently open to say, hey, I can't do this at home because they don't have internet or whatnot. Um, and then, like I said, we want them to have access to resources if they have them. I have not personally pursued any of these companies to know what that looks like on the other end if you do get their internet in your home. Um, so I'm not sure how reliable it is or any of those sorts of things. But those would be families that at minimum we'd pass along the resource and see if there was a way to assist them that way.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those who are looking for a motion?
I'll move.
Would you approve? Need a second? Second? Harry's been moved and seconded. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Yeah, can you read my name?
Item ten point three, the new, our new board policy regarding, uh, early college credit program and it should be a first reading.
Okay. Um, okay, so early college pr- credit program, thank you. Um, is, this is a new, this came out with Act Fifty Nine in two thousand and seventeen. And, um, so it's our recommendation, this actually eliminates youth options. So Act Fifty Nine eliminated youth options. Um, so we, as of six thirty, so in like nineteen days. Um, and it is renamed as early college credit program. So this allows, uh, public and private high school students to take one or more courses at an institution of higher education for high school and or college credit. So this will replace our youth options board policy. Um, what we did is I included a draft, which was actually, uh, some of those other pieces, the comparison of early college credit program and Start College Now from D P I that I included in the, uh, in the board, um, executive summary, does a really, really great job of distinguishing between the two. These are essentially just new, new options for students under Act Fifty Nine that we have to develop a policy for. I was telling Deidre before we were sitting here, there are many school districts around our area. As we, uh, I've been surveying thirteen school districts in our area who are all doing the same thing. A first read tonight with an adoption at their next board meeting, um, ready to go for next school year.
Um, and so to, to process and give a little background, right? So this is when we have expanded, we've extended all the courses that we currently offer in our schools. And it doesn't really make any sense for us to offer the next level of an advanced course in a particular area to one or two students. They have the option to actually take those courses at a, a post-secondary institution. And then they would count towards, um, high school credit and they get credit at the post-secondary institution as well. We have had students participate in youth options, um, fourteen last year. Yep. Not a ton, about fourteen students. One of the things under Act Fifty Nine perhaps by the state is to really expand those opportunities for students to have a college level experience when they're in high school. Um, so these are the two proposed ways that D P I has suggested that you do them. And it just became a, a requirement that we have a policy around each. Um, so there was a survey in amongst all the people who do, working on the instruction work in the whole area. And everybody said, hey, what are you guys doing in your, um, early college now program? So in all the districts that are adopting a policy this evening, they all look almost identical to this. Um, because that is the resource that we're all using. This might be one, as the program gets some momentum behind it and as we learn more, that we come back with some adjustments, which is why we created a rule. Instead of embedding all the requirements into the policy because it's one that might need some updating as things evolve and as things go forward.
Yeah, especially with, you know, biennial budgets. This one just, Act Fifty Nine just kind of showed up in this last budget and then who knows what happens in the next biennial budget. Um, so within the rule, I just kind of put some bullet points up here. Um, so within the rule, this is nine, twelve, they can participate fall, spring, summer. Um, you cannot participate in Start College Now, which is ten point four, I believe, that we'll be on next. Um, so they can't participate in both programs at the same time. You can only take a maximum of eighteen credits. And again, like Deidre had said, um, the district does not pay for a book, a comparable course. So we are not sending a student to U W M to take algebra when we offer algebra here. It's when they have really exhausted, um, all of our coursework that we offer already within the district. Um, there's some application dates on there. And, um, if a student does fail, withdraw, or drop a course, the district, um, requires the student or family to reimburse the money. Um, and then the transportation is at no responsibility of the district, it's on the student and the parent.
Uh, one expansion of this is that youth options used to only be available for eleventh and twelfth graders and now it's available all the way down to ninth grade. So that's an exciting opportunity for a few of our students, um, who, if they were walking out of, at the rate we're growing with summer program, um, if they were walking out of middle school being ready to take that level of course, they would be eligible to do so under this program.
Yes.
And this is already budgeted for in, in our budget in terms of any potential money that we would have to step?
Yep, so we stuck with what we've spent on youth options for the last several years for now because as it's expanded to new grade levels or new opportunities, we're not really sure what that means. You don't, a comparable class is one that you offer. So sometimes we have classes that we offer that we don't run because we don't fit enough students to sign up for those. That's, we, we offer it. Um, so that would not be a course that somebody would be able to utilize that's the goal they're going to do. It's just the courses that you're not able to offer because you don't have enough students taking some of those. Um, a big area for us that, uh, students have used some of the youth options has been, uh, in the C N A licensing through M A T C. We've had quite a few students access that one. Um, Gary and Christine at, at committee asked some smart questions on, is there a tipping point at which it makes less sense to pay fourteen students to go than it does to start to run your own course? And we're getting closer with the C N A one. Um, so Glenn's exploring some options as to how we would offer that class here. Because yes, there's a tipping point at which, you know, if it's one or two students, it doesn't make sense for us to fund it with a teacher. If it's, you know, twenty, oh, ooh, timeout, we should be looking to fund that one ourselves. So you sort of keep a balance of that.
Any other questions?
Is this the one, I might have got it mixed up where if there's a financial burden, an undue financial burden that would go on just twenty, like twenty, is that twenty-five percent?
The twenty-five percent.
Is that this one or Start College Now? I may have got them mixed up. Um, the, the payment of the class is like fifty percent from D P I.
Yes, that is, yes, early college credit, yeah, high school credit only or post-secondary and the school district picks up some and the state picks up some, or the I H E, the higher education. Institution also has a reduced cost.
Okay.
And then we get reimbursed a part of that money from the state.
Right.
So if we have students do these courses and complete them, we actually submit for reimbursement and we give them back.
All right. Any other questions? Are you looking for a motion?
So moved, second.
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, item ten point four, new board policy, Start College Now, first reading.
Okay. Um, so this one is Start College Now, which is the right column on our D P I chart that we're looking at. Again, created by Act Fifty Nine, known as Start College Now. This is for, um, eleventh and twelfth graders to specifically take courses within the Wisconsin Technical College system. So again, we split it up, as Deidre had talked about before. We split it up between the policy, which is things that are most likely not to change versus the rule, which are things that could change with, within any biennial budget. Um, again, a lot of the same pieces. You can't be enrolled in one and the other at the same time. Maximum eighteen, um, credits. Uh, within the rule, we have, um, this is only limited to fall and spring. You cannot take a summer course at the, um, within the Wisconsin Technical College for this. It has the dates on there, March first for, um, for fall courses, October first for spring courses. And, um, pretty much almost exactly the same. Um, you know, reimb, if the student doesn't pass, they, they have to reimburse us. We don't hold anything for transportation. Um, that's all in the, uh, responsibility of the family.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just thought of a question that actually applies to the one we just approved. Um, it was regarding the difference between high school credit and post-secondary credit. Because if it's only for post-secondary credit, then there's a different way of paying for it.
Yeah.
And so I guess my question is, we have to offer the ability to go to something even though, because I thought the requirement to be able to be in it is it would have to be taken for high school credit. Otherwise, you weren't eligible to do it.
That's only if we do not offer a comparable course. So there's a note on there that says if the district does not offer a comparable course, then the school district assumes the cost, more of the cost.
Right, I understand that, but I thought up further, our requirement to have someone be eligible for this is it needed to be taken for high school credit. It needed to be, it needed to be eligible for high school credit in order to be part of the program. Is that not correct?
I'm just rereading this here. There's a high school credit only or high school and post-secondary credit where the school district assumes seventy-five percent of the cost and the state is twenty-five. Post-secondary credit only, the school district is twenty-five, the state is fifty, and the pupil is twenty-five percent.
Right, and that's where the financial burden comes in part on the pupil.
Yes.
But I was confused because I thought that you could only do this if it was part of your high school credit.
Um, so we have not had any students take it just for post-secondary credit.
Uh-huh.
Um, if the rules are, you know, in there and that it is a rule. So we have not had any students who have just taken a course while they were in, in school to be able to do some of those things on the school, right? It would have to still be courses that we don't offer.
Right, right.
Um, if the student chose to not take it for high school credit because they had all their credit requirements and that, um, you can't, you know, you can't force them based on the rules to take it for high school credit.
I see.
Right, so if I'm at twenty-four and a half credits at halfway through my senior year and I'm not graduating early and I utilize that to take youth options courses, I may not need those, those high school credits and I just would be racking up credits I don't need for graduation.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Hmm.
Any other questions? All right, we're looking for a motion?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item ten point five, uh, the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen District Property Liability and Workers' Compensation Insurance. Welcome, Mr. Weaver.
Uh, I placed the executive summary. It, it's the same coverage that we had, uh, the last few years, actually. Uh, the big difference for us is in our workers' comp area. Um, we were able to, because our mod factor, um, how much we pay for the insurance versus how much we actually pay out has been improving significantly over the last three years. That mod factor actually is a rolling average of three years. So it does take time for it to work its way down. Um, but as you can see, some of the practices that we've put in place, things are going very well. Um, so we were able to switch to a new, new workers' comp, um, carrier. And with that switch, we actually have a higher dividend rate and obviously cheaper rates overall. So we are looking at a, a reduction of about fifty thousand dollars over, uh, this current school year. Um, so it's looking very good and that is what we're proposing to go with that, that they have suggested.
Questions? Keith, you know, we need a motion?
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, good.
Stay for the next one.
Stay for the next one. Item ten point six, the Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance membership.
So this one is an, um, annual item. So we bring this, um, this time each year. So this is asking the board to approve our continued, um, relationship with the Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance. This is the body that serves as a collaborative kind of lobbying, um, group on behalf of smaller school districts. But M P S is also, um, part of it. Uh, they have their own full-time lobbyists, but they're also a part of this. And it's for school districts that really can't afford to staff, um, a lobbyist. Um, but it also is, it, it, um, um, is a place where a lot of information flows. So, you know, Janet Delacat, who's, um, writing the safety grant or wrote the safety grant for us. Um, and it's been, she's actually going to the meeting tomorrow, um, as part of, you know, some of the information that is pertinent to her role. So it's not just, you know, for the superintendent or board, but we're actually leveraging, um, more of what, um, they're sharing and putting out. Um, so, you know, we, we look forward to continued, um, work with S W S A with the board's support.
Any questions? The membership cost is the same this year as the previous year.
Correct, there's no increase or decrease.
This year, you're right.
Okay.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes. All right, uh, next item on our agenda is, uh, any suggestions for future agenda items?
Yes, I have one.
Okay.
Um, I would like to add the, a presentation on the development process and vetting process used by district staff, by district staff in the creation and distribution of surveys used to gather information from school district stakeholders.
Got it.
Any others? Okay, great. Okay, um, at this point, we will take a five-minute recess. We will be recording the workshop, um, beginning in about five minutes. We'll take a five-minute break to kind of stretch. Um, and then we will come back, we'll continue the recording, and then we will begin our business services workshop on the, uh, budget, uh, for eighteen nineteen and tax levy number two. We are at recess.